I mean.
Think we're good, and I don't know what the volume happened here.
Thank you all right.
So it's good, but I usually.
Can I start?
Yeah, I think go ahead.
All right. All right, I'm calling the Village of Cross Plains Board of Trustees meeting for May twenty second, twenty twenty-three. For order, roll call, please.
Dusty Brad.
Here.
Dusty Brunner.
Here.
Dusty Borcard.
Yeah.
Dusty Bro.
Here.
Dusty Paul Call.
Here.
Dusty Peddler here.
Here, President Langton.
Here, the stamp for a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the land, the United States of America. And with threefold in full leeches sands, one nation under God, he do us well, with the beginning justice for all. Right, we're at quick comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the village board on any issue, please observe the time limit of three minutes while the village board encourages input from residents that may not discuss or act on any issue that is not duly noted on the agenda. So. Yeah, go ahead.
All right, I received two emails. The first was from the Cross Plains Stingray Committee. The Cross Plains Sting- Cross Plains Stingrays would like to take this opportunity to voice our support for taking actionable steps towards the improvement or replacement of our current pool. The Stingray Swim Team is the second largest team in the Tri-County League and our regularly conference champions. Our pool and the support we receive from our community are huge factors in making our summers fun and successful for our swimmers. Our community pool is not only important to the Stingrays, but the village as well. Ah, as parents in the community, the pool is a large part of our summer. It's a regular meeting spot for our families and should be a source of community pride. In conclusion, we hope that the village board supports the Pool Feasibility Subcommittee and Parks and Recreation's recommendation to move forward with Phase One, Step One, and Two. We are excited to see the village move forward with improving our current pool to maintain the community hub that it currently is. The second email was from Kelly Endress. And her email stated, I wanted to express my thoughts in the fact that I do not believe nonprofits should have to pay a fee for promoting special events that draw out town visitors to the area. I cannot vouch for all community events, but as a committee chair for the Wine Walk held in conjunction with Trout Days, we can prove to the village that the Wine Walk alone brings in participants from DeForest, Sock Prairie, Middleton, Spring Green, et cetera. The Chicken Barbecue is a community event held and highly requested by our locals. This or these events take a lot of manpower from our chamber and volunteers, but bring in visitors which benefit the Village of Cross Plains. These community events are beneficial to both the nonprofits as well as the village. So why would the village not want to promote the advertisement of these events? I personally do not feel it's right to charge fees for these. I would completely agree that businesses like Endress Insurance would need to pay a fee. But the village should be supporting the local nonprofits. Please do not penalize our local nonprofits in the area for their continued efforts in serving our community. Thank you for listening.
You should sound like you're gonna be on.
Um, Andy Hartman said he was going to try to join, but he said he also had a school board even.
Yep, I'm right here guys. Hey, the thanks, hello to everybody. I'd like to discuss a gentleman.
Andy, I I cannot hear you here. I think we're having a computer speaker issue. Hold on just a moment. Did it show as mic was muted still?
Yeah. So.
How we doing, everybody?
All right, Andy, try to go ahead again here. Let's see if we're working.
Yeah, sure. I'd just like to say hello and.
Hey, Mike.
You got the video.
Yeah.
Hello.
Hey, Mike, do you remember which microphone setting it is for the?
Sounds like. Yeah, no worries, no worries.
Remember which one it is on those.
I think it's due to it's on here.
It's like as soon as we join something like one side. Andy, you wanna try?
Yeah, you guys hear me?
Oh, yeah, we got you now. Thanks.
All right, fantastic. Hey, good to hear, everybody. Um, I would like to just comment on item number twelve. Uh, and just show my support for a little bit more transparency. I think it's a great idea to have department heads get their voices into the village board more. As a previous member, um, the only time we'd hear from uh, our directors were via issues that would happen at the board where they physically had to be there. So I think it's a phenomenal idea to have them maybe just have a running document with a very simple template that department heads can fill out simultaneously during the department head meetings that village board members would then have access to so that we can see their thoughts in real time and make sure that all of their ideas are being heard at the village board level. So I'd just like to give a shout out to Cameron Bjorklund for putting that on the agenda. I think it's a great idea. And thanks for what you guys do, and I'll talk to you guys later.
Thank you. All right, with anybody else? Kelly, did you want to? Okay. All right.
We said there was someone in chat.
But don't be.
Yeah, we're gonna. Okay. Okay, uh, next is a recognition of service for Pam Bosman. Um, I wanna just read the document here. Let me just get this up on the screen. Okay, recognition of service upon retirement, Library Director Pamela Bosman. Whereas Pamela Bosman began her career at the Rosemary Garfoot Public Library, Village of Cross Plains as a high school library page under the directorship of Rosemary Garfoot herself. Whereas Pamela Bosman after high school became the Assistant Director, used services librarian. Upon Rosemary Garfoot's illness in nineteen ninety-one, uh, took on the directorship of the library and oversaw the naming of the library to which we now know as the Rosemary Garfoot Public Library. Whereas Pamela Bosman spent the next thirty-two years as the library's director, ensuring that the library provided access to the materials in a variety of formats to meet the educational, recreational, and informational needs of the patrons. Whereas Pamela Bosman demonstrated her enthusiasm for knowledge, making sure to create a community within Cross Plains of lifelong learners. Pam championed the pursuit of open access to information to a diverse and inclusive community. She accomplished this by making sure that everyone that set foot within the library felt welcomed and included. Whereas Pamela Bosman encouraged the promotion of the library to a living laboratory, making sure that all environmental factors were looked at when the building, when building the new library building. She is a steward of the land, providing environmental and ecological collections within the library, teaching future generations about conservation. Whereas Pamela Bosman has been a staple in the library within the Village of Cross Plains for forty-six years. That has been forty-six years spent cultivating relationships with patrons, community organizations, the friends of the library, village boards, and village staff. Forty-six years of connecting people with the power, with the power of knowledge, forty-six years of a legacy well-built. The Cross Plains Village Board expresses its deep gratitude to Pamela Bosman for her dedication, enthusiasm, hard work, and commitment to the Village of Cross Plains and its residents, and wishes Pamela Bosman all the best in her well-deserved retirement and future endeavors.
Thank you very much. Anybody would like to say anything? Nicely written. Did you write that?
In collaboration with others.
Okay, nicely done. Thank you.
Yeah, make sure you thank her. I don't remember if the last word is.
That's the key point, yes.
There's somebody or something for her.
Yes.
Yeah, something just got sent.
Oh, I did.
First, yes.
All right. Uh, consent agenda. On request of any trustee, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration under general business. Anybody have anything they like? Cameron?
I don't know if it necessarily needs to be removed, but I have this. A question at number four.
Okay.
Um, so should I ask the question or do we have to remove it and have?
No, you can ask a question on that.
I guess Bobby, I was just kinda looking for uh, an explanation on on where the funds are coming out for funding the Brewro project. So I mean, I see like the D and R revenue bonds. Is that just, is that a lot of the, I don't know, did you just, instead of me just asking questions on all of them, could you just add a little detail maybe?
Right, so the D and R bonds are the clean water fund and state drinking water loan programs.
Yep.
Um. Whatever the breakdown is, um, so Town and Country emailed over these final estimates and breakdown on Friday.
Okay.
And then we were gonna use some sewer restricted funds.
Okay, yeah. And what is that?
Um, I don't know that we have committed to which one you can come from either. Liquid connection fees, we have plenty money, otherwise in the support fund.
So the liquid connection fees, is that, is that like when someone builds a new home, right, or a well?
Yeah.
They have to pay that money back, so.
Yeah, so we've accumulated over four hundred thousand. Money we can use.
And and didn't we have issues with that and the tip or was that some other sewer fund we were not supposed to pull out there?
No, you're correct. That's where the money was borrowed from for the tip.
Okay.
So the kid needs to pay that back. I think we got about a hundred thousand, so.
Definitely, I definitely think I saw that that's paying. So I guess what is restricted about those funds?
Well, there's one fund that's restricted where because we have a loan on the sewer plant, you have to keep a certain amount in reserve to fix equipment and everything. So there's, that's what, that's a restricted one, but that was so large at one time, I think it was three, four years ago. We peeled off the amount that was above that was required and put it into a support fund so it could be used for anything. Or related to sewer.
Right, so it's actually the restricted ones are, they have to be restricted to a sewer.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay, yeah, gotcha.
So we have more than, well, we have four hundred thousand or a little more of sewer funds from connection fees, so we're using part of that. And then more from the Clean Water Act of the D and R to pay this sewer part.
Yeah.
Uh, three forty-five, okay. And then the remaining ARCA funds that we have. And then just we have to borrow a hundred and sixty to cover the last.
Yeah.
There's also depreciation, uh, the depreciation fund is paying for part of it. And there's two grants, one for water and one for sewer.
And what is the depreciation grant?
Well, that's, that's not a grant. We've been depreciating our sewer pipes and everything, so that has accumulated like, I think that was over four hundred thousand too, so some of that is going towards it. Which makes sense and for replacing sewer pipe. Do you wanna do something, one of those teaching us about the budget thing? You just went all funds inside the sewer water system. Yeah. I would agree with you there.
Don't worry, I'll have more questions on the water and sewer. We're gonna get down to the uh.
About it? Okay, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Yep. Any, any other questions on, on any of those or wanna remove?
I'm making a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Um, to approve the consent agenda. And the consent agenda.
All right, all right, I have a motion in second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All same, so move. Uh, report, uh, village officers, number one, uh, village president, everything I have is covered within the the agenda.
We just have Memorial Day coming up, um, um, they're still looking for volunteers for the hot dogs stand, it's the best place to be. And clean up. And there are a couple other ones. There's a link that you can go on and check it out. The parade I believe starts at. I don't know.
Eleven.
Eleven. Yeah. So that is that and the wine walk and trophies that were very successful. I was at a town that heard with great.
All right, thank you very much. Other trustees?
Bodie, uh, Pickleball Court at Bear Park are going tremendously well, I believe it's, we have one league of sixteen people with fourteen on a waiting list. Um, the bathroom project at Bear Park is now completed and is, it looks tremendous. And a lot better, more even accessible. Yeah, they're very nice. They haven't seen them. You should go out. Two of them were on live this morning, two were live, yeah, but they're very nice. Good improvements there, probably wrapping up, you see the poor stuff will be covered then.
All right, go ahead, Sarah.
Uh, so with the library, um, they had a very successful, the friends of the library are very successful with sale during trout phase. And they, the library now is looking at some really good candidates and are going to be moving forward with interviews for the position. And then another thing, I just wanted to thank Mike Exon for all of his work with the first annual trout phase five K. Um, we learned a lot about how to run. But I feel like she's always open to any kind of maybe crazy ideas that people come up with, and I really appreciate having that in.
Thank you. And Bodie, one more thing I wanted to recognize Lieutenant Brady. Uh, yesterday was his last day as a member of the Cross Plains Police Department. And I really appreciate all of his service and his interaction with the families and kids in this community. He's gonna be sorely missed in the community.
All right, anybody else? All right, we'll go to village administrator.
Okay, Ryan. Got a couple of things to cover tonight. Um, first up, uh, tomorrow, um, if you've been paying attention, there's been a lot of talk within the state uh, capital about some local government funding packages um, that are being discussed right now for possible approval um, in the new budget. Um, so next, uh, one of the things that we were uh, given the opportunity to do um, was attend a local government day, um, which is gonna be put on at the Manona Terrace tomorrow in support of local government funding. Um, so Bobby and I will be attending that as the majority of the day tomorrow. Um, and we're gonna have an opportunity to speak to our legislators and let them know how important government funding is for local governments um, within this uh, this new proposed bill. Um, so I'll give an update on how that goes at one of our next meetings, uh, to keep you posted on that. Um, the second item, um, I wanted to provide a couple of updates related to some of the different grant applications that um, we've put together here in the village of late. Um, the first one, as you might recall, there was a grant opportunity for um, the Vibrance Spaces Grand that was through the Wisconsin Economic Development Corps, and that was for the uh, Glacier Square Park. Um, unfortunately, there was a huge, huge application volume for that, so the village was not selected for that. I think there was maybe five grants in total, and they had over ninety-plus municipalities apply for those. Um, so unfortunately, we didn't get that. Um, I just recently had an opportunity to put a letter of support together um, through uh, Dane County, um, and this was for the new EV charging initiative that they're trying to put together within the county. Um, so I did a letter of support on behalf of the village for the Charge Up Dane County um, program. Um, hopefully that will lead to a greater expansion of EV charging stations within the county. Um, hopefully that might lead to something here within the village as well. Um, the FEMA grant, which I put a little um, a little slot in the packet for your viewing. This one I heard back on recently, um, it is being reviewed by FEMA currently. Um, so right now they're doing a little tribal, uh, tribal notification um, of the site to see if there's any archaeological significance of the site, if that might be disrupted. Um, if there were any um, development for our flood mitigation proposal on site. Um, we hope to hear back from that soon. Um, if that does get approved, I mean, that could be on the, the kind of on the, the border of maybe a three hundred thousand dollar grant for the village, which would be great. Um, so I'll keep you posted on that, more to come uh, as that information is known. Um, the Knowles Nelson Path Grant, which we applied for um, a few months back. Um, we did receive a follow-up inquiry related to that. And um, they did ask whether the village might have uh, or be receptive to maybe a smaller uh, figure related to that, if it were maybe gonna help benefit us in the long run of getting an application. So I did approve Brian uh, Berquist to help with modifying our grant requests related to that. Um, if the village does receive that grant, that could be on par with around a two hundred fifty thousand dollar amount. Um, so we will know more on that very soon as well. Um, the last item that I had um, an update on a few months ago, uh, Senator Baldwin put out a proposal, um, notice to uh, local government stating if there are any projects or considerations related to additional federal appropriations funding that we might have um, an interest in applying for, um, to please get those proposals back to her. So I did write up a proposal, I wrote up two proposals actually on, on behalf of the village. Uh, one related to the village's village hall police station project and the second related to the Park Street um, repair project. I did receive notification from them related to the um, the village hall police station project, um, and I think I've informed everybody of that, that they followed up with me on that. Um, a few weeks ago now, I did receive confirmation that our project proposal was selected um, for consideration moving to the, the next step in the federal appropriations. Um, uh, the proposal that I wrote was related to some of the cost increases um, in building, construction uh, related expenses um, and how that would impact our proposal um, here in the village and our, our current budget among. Um, so given some of those cost increases and considerations, um, I'm happy to say that the amount that they considered approving for us is one million dollars for our village hall police station project. We haven't finished and gotten that one hundred percent approved yet, but that's a big milestones to helping um, offset some of the additional costs related to that project in our village, so pretty exciting. I'll keep it posted.
I just wanna uh, add to something I, when it comes to that, uh, Roque, I don't know if people know where that's in Vernon Collings, a community about forty-five hundred, they just built a new village hall last year. Um, I stopped in last Wednesday and talked with the village administrator because I wanted to get an idea of costs that they use the same funding as we did, but one of the things they ended up doing is FEMA ended up paying eighty-five, eighty-seven and a half percent of their community room because it met the standard of a tornado uh, shelter. So they ended up getting six hundred and eighty thousand from FEMA. And I want, I wanted to see what it looked like because I figured it was gonna be a bunker and it had more windows than our, this room right here has. And the hallway, the big difference is the second set of doors are heavy-duty doors that you can lock to the, to the floor. And then obviously the windows have a spec on it. But uh, I think we're gonna look at that avenue to see if that may work for us. So if we can get, you know, one of our largest rooms, eighty-seven and a half percent of it paid, that would be another big boost for us, so um, we're still looking into that. I'm not sure what the specs are and how that would be, but I just wanted to that we're gonna also explore that with FEMA. All righty. Other reports, I have uh, Garrett. Just a quick update on the uh, okay, just a quick update on the staff project regarding the wage compensation plan that we're working on. Um, it's starting to become together. We are currently planning to have materials for distribution at your June meeting in the building. Um. And I guess we'll go from there and take a look at it. All right, thank you very much. Mike, you wanted to come up?
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Yeah, go ahead. No, that's what this is for.
So first thing, I know you had, you did it a little bit there, uh, bathrooms at Bear Park have been accepted by the village, so we did our walk through with Portson, uh, turned out really well, most part. We ran into one huge snag uh, right now, huge, not expensive, a snag. The locks that are in there, they uh, if you push the lock in and you turn it, then you walk out or see, you know, use the restroom, but then you walk out, then the door is locked, so that's what happened. Okay, um, if no one turns it and it just pops out, then you know, it's locked and you leave. So we are working with them. There's one of the big devils inside for the bathrooms and take that lock out, so they'll be able to do it. One fairly small problem that I know, the first way that they had games last Monday night, she said that she literally unlocked, it was going to be about twenty times. The other thing, just a quick update on the pool, so the pool filters, as everyone may remember, were supposed to be delivered on April twenty-first, um, delivered and installed starting April twenty-first. They were finally just delivered today to Perico Products. So um, they received them, they looked them over and noticed that one of them is damaged. So they are working on that, looking at it closer to see if it's just a cosmetic issue, you know, they obviously don't want installing. I had already made the executive decision last week, Thursday, to build the pool and try and build the old filters for the starting this year. We had any issues, we have those on site, so we're able to put them in in a day or two, but um, so far, we didn't get written up for those brokers last year, so it gives us this year to kind of get room as well, so that helps. Um, so we got water in the vessel. The heaters then wouldn't work, so uh, we, we're working with uh, modern, we didn't include tomorrow, we'll be coming, or I'm sorry, thermal dynamics will be coming up tomorrow, we'll look at those. One of those having an issue, it just the pump's not turning on. Uh, we did put the blankets on on Friday. Cool water went up, it had degrees and sixty-eight today, so we did jump on, but just those blankets.
Thank you very much. All righty, let's go to general business, number one, discussion and buck collection regarding the twenty twenty-two annual financial audit report. Oh, yours.
The people who don't know me, I'm uh, Lieutenant Krasinski, audit partner of Johnson Block, um, actually Brett Hoffmeister ran most of the audit this year, um, he's not as funny, so I'm here to um, give a quick overview. I thought maybe just since you had some questions related to funding and things like that, because I was gonna touch on some of those things. Um, at the, the cash account that you're talking about, page twenty-one of the um, make the audit report, the big audit report had a listing of the cash, which shows the unrestricted but committed sewer fund cash. And then the restricted cash accounts, which are restricted mainly for um, the uh, debt issues that are there. There's also some impact money that, that are there, but that probably would be I don't, did anybody get a copy of the draft?
Um, it's on the website.
Okay, I have all of that, so I don't know. Thank you guys, I don't know what page one was. So.
I think I put a link on the front.
The first page, correct.
Yeah.
So can you get, it's not, you can show, it probably helped to show some of these questions. What this is, this is a overview that we usually present to.
You wanted to write all that on the screen?
I think it would be helpful, yeah.
Go down one more page, it's in the.
That's right here.
Oh.
Do you know where it's?
Yeah, I mean, while while you're looking for that, I can just talk on a couple of things also. I mean, you know. Our report on the on the financials, you gotta unmodified opinion, which means. That's what you wanna have. Um there's no qualifications, there's no um. So the it what that says is that. You know, the audit follows generally accepted accounting principle. It's in draft form. I think it's pretty much ready to go. We just. Wanted to do the presentation first, so. Say twenty one, it's not twenty one PDF page on that right there, that page is right there. I I I got it, I I. But um. At the top of the page, there's a listing of connection fees and it says the sewer utility has. Some collective connection fees. This is this four hundred and forty six thousand dollars that's um sitting there. That's. In unrestricted cash um. But it's internally committed by the by. The sewer and is that where you're saying that you were gonna sum the money for brewery? So. Underneath there, there's restricted cash, um which is those are legal restrictions that are usually by. Most of those are um because of. Uh revenue bond debt that the utilities have. They require restrictions in the forms of. The first thing up there is a is a depreciation fund, which. A lot of times they will say that they wanna put money aside for. Future projects, so you have to have things established there. It's a requirement that's put into the bond documents. So um. I thought. I mean, since you asked a question a couple of minutes ago, then I thought that I'd just. Clarify that. Um I mean, it just. The the thing that you had at the beginning was this financial statement overview, and really what I was gonna talk about was the key takeaways. Which, you know, I mentioned about um, you know, the. You know, the first couple of things. Um, you know, the our report is unmodified. Um, the general fund is on pages three and five in in here, and that's the main operating fund. And usually what we try and do is give an explanation of. You know, when they're asking how is the village doing? Um we look at whole dean, but you know, how's your fund balance at? Let's see. Has there been any increase in fund balance? And um essentially, general fund fund balance increased by a hundred and four thousand. For the most part, that was related to expenses that were under under budget. Um the total fund balance. Is a little bit over a million dollars. There's a portion of it that's non-spendable, that's tied to prepaid expenditures. When you're looking at fund balance, that's the carryover of funds. You know, from. A modified pool basis, which you're taking your cash balances plus your. Current assets and your current liabilities and 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 um. Mending them together to find out what the remaining fund balance is. Usually, I mean, for villages, um governments, any your. Goal or target area, which is common is about twenty five percent of the. Next year's budgeted expenditures, which is what nurses at. So you've got, and what I would say, adequate unsigned fund balance. You've got a large amount of cash at the end of the year, but you gotta understand that a lot of that is related to um. Tax collections. Um for the next year, I mean, in December, you send out the tax bills. Start collecting that, but that's for the twenty twenty three budget and and you're not only collecting for just the village, but you're also collecting for the underlying tax and restrictions. Um the tip on the the tip was uh and we. The that was discussed a little bit um before, but. The tip district has a fund deficit of two hundred and thirty one thousand dollars, which is somewhat common for for tip districts. It usually takes several years for them to cash flow. The the fund deficit is a result of internally um funding some of the expenses with advances. From the sewer fund and the uh. A general fund on there. You're at the point where um. The. Tip taxes are paying for their debt service to that. Deficit has been have been pulling down. So that was one of the management letter comments that we've had over the. Basically, um it's to to us, it looks like it's being being managed um. Then, you know, the other the other aspect of it is your utility operations. Um you know, the the water utility. Um you know, currently has a fair amount of decent amount of cash, not as much as the sewer, but you're in the middle of. You know, the big projects in which you're drawing down debt. Um I know in in terms of brewery roam question that you had before. Um, you know, the the village is has had water utility. Rate increase beginning at about a year ago, but that was phase one of the increase, which was. There's a public service commission. We had a two step rate increase, which the larger portion is gonna be done once all these projects are completed. Which which included brewery roam. Was was built into the rate increase application, but it's mainly near.
But on page four, can you remind me what does unassigned deficit mean again?
Um page.
Uh four or thirty. That's on our in our. Or the financial statement highlights.
Oh, okay, our good. Yeah, the the that's that's with related to the tip district where we were talking about um. The unassigned deficit mean means that. First of all, when we're talking about um. Fund balance. There's. Five different classifications of fund balance, non-spendable, restricted, committed. Um assigned and unassigned. And that goes from highest level of liquidity or lowest level of liquidity to highest level. On on this page four, where we're talking about the unassigned deficit of the tip district, that was what I was just mentioning. It's got a deficit of two hundred and thirty. Thousand dollar time. And the reason it's showing a deficit is there. Back. There was a number of expenses that were incurred for the for the tip district, which were funded internally. So they were funded by in advance from the general fund and the sewer utility. And as such, it shows up as a liability on there, so that makes it a deficit.
Thank you.
You know, the the cash flow for the utilities has been positive, you know, and again, I think what like I said, the big thing was is that. Um you know, once all your projects are done, that will build into the rating boost application. Need to modify the uh public service commission and add your step two when the increase. Get through. So when I like I said, I think, I don't know what the status of the projects are, but.
It's a little bit behind because of supply lines.
Yeah. You know, one of the other things that we always look at is uh general obligation debt capacity. Villages. Local governments can borrow up to ten percent of the tax base for general obligation debt. You have other debt besides general obligation debt, that's mainly the revenue bond debt that's that's. Um pledged by the um revenues on the utility, but in addition to that, the general obligation debt. That's based on the full faith um taxpayers. You have on. Approximately sixty eight percent of your debt capacity, where in one of the. In um. Our handout here, where we've got a number of. Charts and graphs. It's actually on second and last page page. There, that one, that one. That shows um the general obligation debt limit. Um compared to your outstanding general obligation debt. So I mean, you know, back to two thousands. Um eighteen, you know, you had. Probably more than um half of your debt debt capacity was. Um utilized. And as your tax base is increased, your general obligation debt is wrong then. That was my brief overview, so.
Big will open up for questions.
Cameron. Um so just to make it simple, I stick with this one here. So the the red line is that as our tax base has gone up, that's the the. The debt we can take on. Correct. But then the green line is showing that we we have been paying off the debt we. And and so I guess a wide gap between those two things is probably generally pretty good.
Yes, I mean, it's it. You have, you know, flexibility. Um I I mean, a again, what I'm gonna. Uh. Point out is that what what isn't included on there was all water and sewer revenue bond debt.
Okay.
Um you know, that's. That's um not included in that. But. You know, you have. If you've got major capital projects, if you're talking about a village hall, I mean, you know, that you're you're gonna have to borrow for that. That would be most likely general obligation debt. The non-grant portion associated with that, so.
And and so that doesn't include the the water sewer structures because of the roof regulations about. You know, all all that money has to be. Centralized around the the water rates and the sewer rates and stuff.
Well, i- you can, and I think you do have some some of the the general obligation debt as assigned to the water and sewer utilities um. But um you have and um beyond that. I I don't have the exact. In the audit report, you know, we're showing probably. You know. Another six plus million in in terms of revenue bond debt that's associated with. Um the water and sewer utility. And when you get the safe, a lot of that is clean water phone loan, safe drinking water loan, you get really good interest rates. Good, so.
Okay. But we scroll up to. Seven.
Page seven?
Yeah.
Of this, yeah.
Forty two of the yeah. There. I guess I was mostly confused on this one because it was the. Operating income loss. Then I was trying to figure out, you know, when the bar went negative or positive, was that like more or less loss? Uh so I could you just.
This is the operating income, which is for the most part. Um you take your. Utility billings. Revenue, that's the main component of that, less your. Operation and maintenance expenses, less your depreciation expense. Um and less um in the water, you take these down from the tax report. So when you see that negative, it was negative. Um we got those back in two thousand nineteen. Um you had a couple of rate increase applications that were filed in the public service commission um that addressed that. So then you have the increase associated with. Um the operating. It's probably in here. We had two years. Different rate increase applications and then. Um we get enough twenty two, we have a small.
Okay, so just. The let's take twenty two water is it's three hundred thousand. That's. You know, we take in the water rate money from the residents, but then we're, uh what did you say? You're taking out of that depreciation and and something else?
Operation and maintenance expenses.
Okay, and then that is so that is is like a positive three hundred thousand.
A positive three hundred thousand in that. What isn't included in there is any interest income, interest expense, any debt services. Public service commission, when they're designing rates, that's the number that I think.
Right, and so when we dipped, when we dipped into, hey, it's it's. It's costing more to run the water system than it is actually. Uh that you're actually taking in, that's what caused us to have to go up and get uh but the two step water rate increase. Okay, um sewer there, just so I, you know, obviously twenty. Twenty green bar. Three hundred fifty thousand and then it's it, you know, it's looking like it's trending down a little bit here. Is that related to like expenses going up?
Um then probably, I mean, I I don't have all the. I I I'd have to look specifically on that. But. I believe that's the majority of the reason. And that operated, when was the last time you had sewer rate increase? Fifteen, so. So I mean, you've had growth, which means you're gonna increase your your revenue, but generally you also have broken expenditures, which probably I don't face that.
Okay, um. I I guess that, yeah, I'm trying to figure this all because, I mean, I'm pretty sure we pay some of the highest water and sewage rates. In Wisconsin from what I can tell, and so it worries me that. We're gonna have to be looking to increase our sewage rates even more.
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Um so the loans that we borrowed to build the new sewer. Will be paid off in twenty twenty five. That's like four hundred thousand dollars a year. This is a design thing. We knew this was gonna happen.
Yeah, this is just a snapshot. This doesn't predict the the future. If you wanna see where. We are in the future, then you have to look at our debt service when it gets paid off. And the the reason some of that went down is because we had a uh we placed some equipment. There were extra costs. That we generally don't have. But the that'll potentially jump up greatly or we'll, I'm hoping. You know, my goal is that we'll bring able to bring sewer rates down a bit once. You pay off the loan. Which is in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
And we'll see. I mean, a lot could happen in between, but we free up four hundred thousand dollars a year that we're paying on a loan right now.
Yeah, and and that, like I said, that graph does not take into consideration debt. So this is just operating revenues, operating expenses. So and sewer rates are generally designed on a cash basis, cash flow basis. Water utility rates, you gotta follow the PSC rules, name, we're looking at depreciation, so. Okay. Right, cuz this is. Operating income, not the net operating income, which we used to track it up with that sort of. When we do that, a lot of these come down significantly.
Yeah. And three years ago, the board, I I had to dream and even more, we decided that. Instead of raising rates and then having to bring down, we were going to use the liquidation um. Connection fees to help balance that, but we haven't needed to let off that, right? We haven't needed to, but that was a long term plan.
Okay. Um I believe that covered all my questions. Uh thank you so much.
Michael, did you have more? Did they get answered? You said you were gonna have some.
No, no.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Doc, just a quick one, like overall health, like how do you feel about going?
Um I. Again, I look at. I get that question asked a lot. I look at fund balance in the in the general fund. We're at, we have adequate fund balance. Um and then you you're looking at overall health in terms of the utility rates, which I I think we just covered there. Um you've had a lot of infrastructure that's going in right now, but you you've got the rate increase application done. That they just happened for the the new water rates happened that in. Increase yet, um but you you're. Increase yet, um but you you're. Your funding is fine.
Um so we're currently collecting for the water and utilities in the well. Um is that built into the rate case about using any of those fees for the well projects, do you remember, or?
I I think they were.
So. That might affect how much we, or the program, but for the well.
But yeah, or you can use it, it will pay off the debt service, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll do that.
I mean, that's generally what happens, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have new customers. I mean, as you get into subdivisions, they're gonna be paying in and, you know, you've already got the infrastructure.
Any other questions, Cameron?
I'm sorry, one more, um. At at least in the summary stuff in the packet, maybe it's in like the whole thing, I haven't I haven't gone through the link yet, does the audit, I assume it doesn't, but it doesn't cover. Um our tax limit, like how close we are to um. Uh Bobby, what's the word?
Levy limit.
Levy limit, thank you.
Um we we it's a, we look at the the your levy limit worksheet to make sure you're in compliance with that, yeah, you, I mean, you, there's a um one word. When we come in there and audit, we do substantive tasking of uh, you know, number of different accounts, and since property tax revenue is in one of your largest. Revenue resources in the front, we take a look at that and and you know, ask for a levy in the worksheet and.
Cause I I you know, I'm I'm hearing that things are healthy, I mean, it looks pretty good, especially back down to twelve where. You know, that our debt limit is often, our but our actual outstanding debt is down. But then, you know, whenever we talk about anything, it's like, well, we can't do it because we're really close to the levy limit, and I understand that that's. Based on different things, and based on like employee salaries and stuff.
Yeah, the the levy limit looks at for the most part, um that is excluded. General obligation debt is excluded on there, so you're looking at your operating side of things, and that's it, hon- honestly, it's a. Um it it's been a difficulty for a number of the municipalities to build, just from the standpoint of. Um. You know, the so many years, you you your operation with increase was tied to the increase in. Assess value. Didn't cover. You know. Inflation, the the increase in assessed value, you know, is tied to in new growth, so we got new growth, we got new service commands, so. But that's 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 been a difficulty that a number of places.
And if I can just add, the health of us financially really is not have anything to do with the levy limit. The levy limit just says how much you can spend. The health of us is, are we bringing in enough money to cover the costs that we have right now? At some point, it's gonna say you can't do any more costs, but we're still healthy by having the cash. Uh on hand and we're paying for our utilities, so they're kind of two different things, that's why. We can be very healthy, but we can still be up against the levy limit, they're not connected.
It's super frustrating, right?
Well, yeah, yeah, it sure is.
Sitting here, we're looking at, you know, the the on-hand tax we have, or this twenty-five percent of our next year budget, like all of these up, you know, all of these really, really good marks and then. But you know, we can't hire anyone, you know.
Yeah.
This is the world we live in.
Yes. I mean, I I have seen more and more places. Because I mean, it's just, it it and. It, you know, and that's a common problem, I mean, and to ask the public to vote yes to putting in more expenditure, you know. More taxes, but some places are getting one of them they have, so.
All right, anything else?
Oh, we do, we do.
I would make a motion to approve the report as as presented.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve the twenty twenty-two annual financial audit report as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh aye. All poll same, so move, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, appreciate it, you got it.
Nice night.
Yep. All right, discussion and possible action, pay application number eight for water system improvements project. I guess, I guess you're gonna have to take this.
Yeah, I I don't have much to offer on this one as far as information to break down the costs on this, I'm not sure if Jerry. Was briefed in any way.
It's it's just a standard fair request for the work that's completed, um one of the bigger items is concrete work. For the directly parking area of wall three, um painting is done. Bathrooms are near the finish, as Mike told you earlier.
All right, do I have a motion?
I will make a motion that we accept a pay application number eight for water system improvement project.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Uh just.
Yeah, go ahead.
We we run into these on maybe almost every meeting, is there, is there a reason they can't be in the consent agenda?
They used to be on the consent agenda for other projects.
Yeah, we used, but then someone asked them to be taken off.
But then the trustee could pull it out of the consent agenda if if they see something.
If you guys would like these on the consent agenda, we will not have a problem putting on the consent.
I would love for this to be in the consent agenda.
Okay, do note it. Does there's any objections to that? Second, all right, well, you don't have to do a motion. Okay. Trying to make everybody happy.
Okay.
All right, so I have a motion and a second, any other discussion, all in favor, say aye. All the polls same, so move. All right, number three, discussion and possible action regarding the specific implementation plan for Park. Bank uh twenty-four old seven brewery road. Yeah, I'm surprised it not here, but. Oh, are you here to speak for the bank?
Um I wouldn't.
Why don't you come up in case people have questions?
Sure.
Thank you. All right, uh does anybody have any questions? Are are we ready to go right to uh a motion?
Yes.
Okay, Cameron.
Well, Michael, why don't you go first, cause I know you have questions.
Hello.
No, okay.
I was just gonna say, thanks for looking into the four thousand, which is three thousand kilo laying, agreed for security thing. I understand that, I know other places do it when things like that, and security issues aren't raised, but we need something to consider. Here, as I said, uh sustainability committee is considering this for an alternation for ordinance. Something else just in the back of the mind, I mean, afterwards, I started thinking about it, it wasn't brought up. Um you know, he talked about the concern when employees leave the building initially, like when you're shutting down, you want lit, like and all that. Possible other thing would you do? It's not gonna, but like they shut off, you can leave the building light on, the E T lighting lighting on, but shut off the parking lot lighting. Normally, you're you're two big lights on that thing, or you're two parking lot lights that are on poles. Shut those down on the overnight, ten to five, it's just a possibility, it's these things have been being kicked around also in sustainability. Sort of like a curfew for parking lots aren't used, but you leave the security lighting on around the building. We just build a parking lot, like, and save a lot of energy and lighting issues.
I can bring it up to that for consideration, but I think just due to security reasons for, you know, if somebody is coming through the parking lot at night. To use the I T in the night drop, just to have that lighting for them is probably gonna be done.
Any other questions?
Cameron, um. Without going into any details, obviously, but um we did meet closed session around the September timeframe. Is anything impacted by this project with that?
With. You're talking about the sale of this building?
Yeah.
That's public, so we can talk about that, uh I don't, they're not connected. In this, if you're asking. Does a person who bought this have a problem with what's happening there?
Well, I mean, you say they don't, because they owned it, but um.
Yeah.
But you know, the the, when we had talked about all that, right, it sounded like the plan was, you know, now look to. To I, you know, to both, both lock their own by the same entity.
Right.
Um and that's just. Gone now?
Well, no, they still own both. I believe you're you're not buying, you're leasing, so what happens in the future?
I didn't know that.
We don't. Yeah, okay, no, yeah, it's a lease agreement. All right, any other?
I'm all for it, you know, for picking up a blighted chain of buildings, it's been a little bit of an eyesore, what they're doing. It's I mean, it's broke.
All right, Doug?
I'll make a motion to approve the specific implementation plan as presented.
A second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second. To approve the implementation plan for Park Bank at twenty-four old seven Brewery Road as presented. All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye. Uh aye, all poll same, duties are staying. Alrighty. Number four, discussion and possible action regarding, thank you, Kelly. Uh regarding zoning code amendments to add parks and conservancy, so we're gonna do these one at a time. Uh Mike, do you wanna come up here?
So if I can have a motion for what's on the agenda as Roman numer, I think, oh no, I said, yeah, Roman, that Roman. numeral not one, I don't know what the I. Well, yeah, but it's two I's, those are numbering, I don't know what that is, yeah.
I would like to make a motion to amend A four dot two five C of the village cross plans code more into regarding uh conservation zoning district.
All right, do I have a second?
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
Look, you can leave out the I and then there's no.
Are there any, we're at discussion, any questions for Mike on this, Cameron?
I. Feel like I'm having deja vu, but I mean, I read the memo, it looks like we kicked it this back last April, it's been a long time, okay. I I just wanted to make sure we weren't casting something we already passed, but I guess.
Well, I can, I thought we had passed it, but clearly we hadn't.
Okay, sure.
So that law is somewhere in there.
The only thing is there are two properties that we need. Um we do a C S M on, uh just to make sure that they are changed. So it's so it's one hundred percent correct, once it's. So Old Elder Park, and it's just the way that they platted when they provided to the village, Old Elder Park is the first one. So Old Elder, if you look at the flat, it was like Old Elder Park and Cedar Hill Conservancy are one property. So we'll have, we'll do a C S M, we'll probably park to make that a park, uh not a conservancy. If that allows the law to actually be on there, it depends, you know, so they're never built, uh and then the other one is changing the. Newly established uh area of Glacier Ridge, I'm sorry. Scenic Ridge, scenic valley, geez. Scenic Valley, which would be the area. Right on the, we're going west, right on the the north side of the trail. That would be changed to a park.
All right, any other, oh, Cameron.
I guess, just I was gonna ask this question, which is in vain of that, is there anything that needs to be done? With the the Glacier Creek neighborhood now that there's that, cause I mean, I know that whole three thousand green parkway is zone as park now. And we have the little park over there.
Well, that's why we're doing this.
Right, okay, okay, one, so but once, but I mean, you're you're getting. Um if that lot isn't split up or anything. Okay, so I mean, we're fixing all the parks, but now we got like a little tiny park there.
Yeah.
That'll have to be fixed at some point.
Glacier Ridge Flavor, did I say the wrong thing yet?
Okay, yeah, I'm just trying to. Yeah, Glacier Ridge Playground will just, they have defined, it's the whole land, we thought it was park, which is a lot of playground, so. Okay. Um. In Glacier Ridge Conservancy, that's that up with the.
Sliding Hill area, that's already, it's separate, so we're good.
Right.
Part of that one person, do we need to? Split that parcel in at some point to?
Well, it depends, there may be a future, like if. But we wouldn't do it now for the park, we would do for whatever goes in there. Cause it it's already zoned properly for what's there, so there's no need to change.
But it's undevelopable per se, and then once. You get to that point, then you do this. But some of it falls right into the park, and so you wouldn't have to, so you just gotta wait to see what happens.
Yeah, the bigger issue are the the things that you don't allow technically in parks and or S R four. Or that are allowed there that aren't allowed in conservancy land right now, we have a couple of these parts that we have. Uh set up as a conservancy or as a park, so they're not zoned correctly right now.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
One on here, that second line that's in red, that doesn't have to be that campground already allowing. As as a conditional use. That, like, I don't know why that line is on.
Yeah, you're right, it can be conditional use.
Like, I don't know why that's there, that was something I commented on before, though you don't need to add like seven, it's already in there, it's like six of the.
That was added by Sonya.
Uh it's already, well, I'll the, I checked today, the ordinance that's online lists the campground as conditional use.
I I don't, all I know is I, it's just gonna be redundant, cause campground is already in there.
Uh Conservancy doesn't hurt as long as they align.
Well, why is that of those communication tower? That's what C seven, I don't know why.
Right now, he's he's saying that eighty-four dot two five C seven in the actual ordinance. So it's his communication tower.
But line six is campground, like campground is already in the conditional use, so it doesn't have, we're.
They wrote those.
Uh yeah, I know, I. So you just wanna take the reference to whatever the campground is in there or.
Versus take that out of.
I think what he's saying is.
Cause it's already there.
Well, if it stays as is, it's incorrect.
Well, you don't want it added as.
But if you remove it, it'll be fine.
Yeah, cause then you have campground a six and campground a seven, and you'll be removing.
We'll either align it with what it is in the ordinance or a little bit, we'll take it out.
Yeah, okay.
Just if you wanna make that.
Well, we'll just make a note of that.
Yeah.
I don't think we have the other.
Any other? Questions or discussion?
Well, I do have one on.
Okay, go ahead.
Um. The accessory use is permitted by right of the conservancy, removing the personal intended down, but we're adding it to non-rentational accessory structure, which is. Basically like the ability to build a shed inside of a. Conservancy, right? You know what that means? Yeah, I'm against that, I'm opposed to that, conservancies are, you don't want sheds built in conservancy, it's a building. What pavilions, yes, absolutely.
They have one on the top of the Ice Age Trail segment, uh uh from K P. But it, I mean, it really depends on the village, I believe the village ordinance would necessarily allow them one percent silver, but if you look out at Bestin Park, you know shelters. Within their, that whole entire park would be instead of conservancy.
And it would still be on here before they did.
It is, I'm just giving you an example. No, it's not, it's such a park.
No, there is no, Xander Park is. There isn't a park still.
No, it's in that regard, you're like.
That's the whole reason in here.
Yes, but I think I think Xander is.
Well, it's really a zone of concern, my my understanding is, the whole reason we're doing this is trying to separate. I consider Xander Park will be a park. Huh?
In his name.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying, so right now, we don't have that. There's a, we don't have them separated, and that's what we're trying to do tonight, is separate our zoning. For them, so we would have to move, yes, there may be some action, and we have to rename something. To put it in, you know, the change the zoning so it would be, um but that's the whole reason we're doing this, is trying to get. Um, but that's the whole reason we're doing this, is trying to get it, so. But I wanna, what we're focusing on, Michael doesn't want any structure on conservancy, I hear Cody is saying he wouldn't. I don't have a problem with the shelter either, I, cause everything comes through us, so we can decide, it's not like someone's gonna build. A shelter or a shed on our conservancy land, it's gotta come through the board. And I think you, you're limiting yourself on something that could be really a good thing. Sometimes it's nice to get out of the sun.
Or have, if it rains on you, it's like, but obviously it'll come through us anyway, and I don't think the village is gonna spend fifty grand and put a. Uh shelter on the top of the hill right now.
Alright, but I don't know, I just. Probably conservative would not, like a natural and. And not, yeah.
Structures. Pesky Park. Ice Age Trail, I mean, there's a lot of places almost.
I mean, there's maybe a lot of those kind of, they have a shelter and they're moving on top of there, they could do a lot.
Yeah.
I mean, I do appreciate though that to try to protect land that hasn't been touched.
That's the idea, that's why would you read the first sentence to order conservancy definition, it's to deserve the natural duty of the scenic areas.
Right, and 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 that's not to say that that is not gonna be the case, but there could be that. Case where it would be beneficial or. Put it that out, the trail hat or something like that. Like I say, I I think. When you don't allow anything, you don't have the flexibility, I think you hurt yourself. Having the flexibility doesn't mean it's going to happen. Right?
I think you could also argue though, that by having flexibility open enough to to occur more often.
Exactly.
I mean, I.
By by taking it in, it opens it up, if something comes along with the grant, it can always be amended in the future and be looked at.
Well, that's that's, that was gonna be my counterpoint, nothing that we do is for sure, someone could come in and say. They want a conditional use to put it, I, it's all about how, how much red tape do you wanna go through, basically on what direction?
Right.
Right. Okay, so that being said. Um. I motion to change.
Whoa, whoa, we have a motion already, we're in a discussion.
Yeah, we're in discussion.
You can, I can make a.
Send a motion to us.
To amend, cause we just.
Oh.
We just did this, I'm gonna make a motion, I make a motion to amend. Applying three down to eighty two twenty five D, to just remove the personal antenna and towers. And not insert the rough up to the village, non-residential exception structure.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay, there's no second, the motion dies. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, uh all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same?
Nay.
Okay.
And we didn't do a motion amendment, Brian, but um.
We'll just know about the campground thing.
Yeah, I think we have to check where, there might be a reason why Paul or. So we just gotta make.
Probably an older version, but I don't have a copy today, six already has campground, and I have an older one from like three years ago that I printed out with campground. Like, it's been in.
Yeah, we'll check on that.
Just wanna make sure we get it.
Yeah, I'll confirm with Paul and see if there was a rationale behind that.
Alright, so now we're on double I. Uh. Creation of section eighty four point four two of the Village of Cross Plains Code of ordinances.
And then that eighty four forty two is the park, right, that's adding a park zone.
It's it's, yeah, just creating the zoning district.
Yeah.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I will motion that we create. Uh, we add the park zoning to section eighty four forty two of Village of Cross Plains Code ordinances.
Alright, do I have a second?
I'll play it.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Discussion. Alright, all in favor, say aye. All opposed same? But moved, triple I. Remove, repeal and recreate section eighty four point five four of the Village. Of crossplain zoning code of ordinance concerning table of land uses.
I will make the motion you just said. If I may repeal all that and.
Well, yeah, that would, that would be helpful, otherwise I would have sold this whole question on what we're doing, so it's in the minutes, so.
I would like to make a motion that would repeal and recreate section eighty four dot five four of the Village of Cross Plains zoning code ordinances concerning tables of land uses.
Do I have a second?
I'll play it.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, discussion?
I am.
Okay, go ahead, Michael.
Questions, I know that this just replicates the stuff that is held above inside of the different thing, but. I'm just pointing out that I found some errors in this that need to be corrected. You could go just to page one twenty eight. Where. Mostly everything that we've done with the change in conservancy. Looked to be in here is correct, but I just want this to be known in a sense we're repealing and recreating it. If you look on there at like residential chicken coop number thirteen down. And how it has seized conditional use and all of those, we mold, those are all permitted now. I think that they have the line for the bees and the line for the chicken coops backwards, and you don't have chicken coops. Past. Multi-family fourteen, like, right now, that that thing says you can have a chicken coop in a mineral extraction, or a bee hive in a mineral extraction area. Which is not what any of the stuff of ours. Somehow whoever created this at one time.
That would have been Sonya.
They do not match. The words above, you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, no, you're, you think they've been switched around, they probably did a cut and paste and put the. The wrong line in there.
And the Ps don't go that far for chicken coop, they're only allowed to have chicken coops where people live, you can't have them.
Right.
Community mixed use area.
Right.
It's like the list of apartments, cause the land, cause the owner has to give permission, it's all the. Single family residents through multi-family, whatever, it's what it'll look like, the chicken coops. I'm just saying, if we're re, if we're repealing this and recreating it, we need to create it correctly.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent.
Cause that does.
But that, it would have been, yeah, we should, it would have been nice if you saw this ahead of time to let us know, so we could have made those, and I'm not. Really sure how we're gonna do this. Yeah, I guess we're gonna have to.
Okay, then there's another one, if you go down.
Are you making notes of all these that we get like corrections? The next month or?
I'm writing this.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk to Michael out here too.
Yeah, or that, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, and I'm not saying I didn't go through the whole entire document, these were just the ones that I found when I was, this is the conservancy stuff, sort of just kind of. The other one is applying twenty four, which I've indicated that solar energy systems, it's actually inside of our. Chapter eighty four, they're all called small solar energy systems, or something, the small government, because it would be a small wind energy.
Yeah, yeah.
Small need to be added, and on there, we didn't have permitted on the first three, I believe that. We might have permitted it across all zoning districts, because we didn't want them coming as, cause they don't come as conditional. They're all say, they're how they all say conditional, there, those C, I think all those Cs need to be switched to Ps.
Okay. AJ, for small.
No, for small. And the small should be reinserted. Um, but yeah, I think that all those, that 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 should be reverb, but I kinda did it real quick today, but it seemed like they all had gotten moved up. And what's weird is that you can tell like as they get moved, because the bottom two is permitted, was either chicken or solar. Okay, these are all, that's how I was able to.
No, that was your catch, yeah, there was, we must eliminated something that got them all out of way or something.
Something happened where.
There's your book of Robert Wildgore, say, uh, undo theirs.
Now we just voted down everything. Yeah, we voted down.
So what about one of the two, to those of the.
Oh, no. So we'll just, we're just gonna vote it down, and then they'll bring it back. Which is fine, cause our rules say under reconsideration, yeah, I think next one. There's not a problem with that.
Yeah, that's all I saw, and I don't think we've changed a whole lot of other stuff, so I think a lot of the other stuff is pretty good.
Okay, we have Sonia. Uh amendments, I think that's who needs to go back to the right, probably.
Yeah, Ben, yeah, well, but, but you were on plan when we went through all those.
This is all my fault.
No, no.
Eighteen months ago, we were like, should we do the parks zone, and everyone was like, probably not, and I was like, no, we really should, and now here we are, and now.
Yeah.
What'd I do?
No, that was a good, somehow we lost the line, we lost the line somewhere.
Yes.
So it's not a big deal.
We'll amend it, maybe they just wanna email a draft copy to Michael. Before it hits the packet of timing laws, I mean. He's, he's got a very detailed good idea, so I don't have to do this.
Alright, that sounds good, so we have the discussion, all in favor of passing the motion and say aye. All opposed, the same, aye. Alright, so we're gonna bring it back under reconsideration next one. Alright. Number five, discussion and possible action. Uh adding a village speed limit sign on North Hill Point Road.
Discussion on the way.
Well, I think what we should do, I I think what we should do is kind of understand. I I'm trying to understand, I suppose.
So, the public safety committee received, can you guys hear me? Public Safety Committee uh received a complaint from a resident saying that cars are speeding up and down that. Uh or the. We did patrol it, and it's true, there are people come off of P that fly up that street, and then people anticipate. You know, coming on the P and already coming down already good, and it's a hill, I mean, so at any doubt, you know, it creates some where, some speed, so. Their recommendation was to get a, there's no twenty five hour speed limit sign up there, so to get one facing one, would they get one facing down? They, they uh. Said there was a couple of good spots, you know, that they thought since they lived there, um so that's what was mentioned in the report. Uh there really was no opposition from anybody, um. Cameron, can I speak more to that since you're chairman, but. Um. It's just signage.
But we only own the road from Laughenberg to P.
Oh, Stone Valley.
Oh, we do, Stone Valley to, okay, Stone Valley.
So where the signs be with that?
Yes, where the, wherever the signs would be, we would be allowed to do that.
Could be right after Stone Valley, right, when you turn out.
Right before the Conrad.
No, uh Laughenberg, Conrad.
Well, it'd be one, one, going one way. And placement, I I think Jerry could decide where that should go, come to a minute, it's just signage.
Yeah, no, no, I I I was just figuring how there could be, I thought it was just from Laughenberg to P, that's only one block, so I was just trying to figure out. How the cars could get that.
We haven't got any more complaints except for that. This complaint, we haven't received any more complaints, however, sitting up there, people are coming down, a pretty good clip.
So, I've got one of the oldest, um I'm trying to teach John how to drive a manual. And I just think people aren't used to the neighborhood being there at all, so as opposed to the Stone Valleys, you get that twenty five, I think it'd be really good.
Yeah. Fear is that there's also some driveways that are kind of in the blind, so you do backing out, people are coming down at thirty five, or you know. Seems like a lot faster than that, and so maybe just signage might slow people down, I mean, few traffic stops out there.
Could we put maybe even a driveway sign, or no, do they do that? Just to warn people, cause that is new, that's totally.
Well, driveways, uh driveway. Two years, like. Fine driveway.
Cause that is dangerous, right?
We are, we, that would be a mistake.
You're gonna have a lot of going driveways.
I think we'll stick with speeding and stick on, so that be control.
Sure.
Even though there's a new chair in the town area, I don't wanna go onto their turf. Yes.
Um, I just, I wanna, that Tony had said, there was unanimous agreement for this in that meeting, and then just, that area has got. Possibly other issues, cause we did receive yet another email from someone else two days after public safety met. So we haven't even talked about this item, so I just, I want the board to know that we're probably becoming. Possibly more stuff with that area, so there's.
There's not, we mentioned that a year ago.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just, just wanted to let everyone know.
Yeah.
I'd make a comment too, that as far as what I see of my home office on law, I don't see any. Traffic or speeding or issues with the coming further down law.
Yeah.
It's coming out.
The emails we have gotten said it's, it's exactly what you said, it's a line out of the hill.
Yeah.
Alright, now let's have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we do two speed limit signs on North Bell Point Road. Um, between, and North Bell Point Road between P and Stone Valley.
Is it, I I don't, is it Stone Valley? Okay, second. Alright, do I have a second?
I second.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed same, so moved. Alright.
Brian, will you notify the them?
The residents?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
Alright, discussion and possible action approval to post village police department sergeant job announcement.
Alright, so. I took this job, I wasn't told, I had three retirements within three years, so probably should have a conversation. Um. We have, we have uh accepted Kim's retirement, he's twenty nine years in, we appreciated his time. Uh much like Lisa and Scott and him, they agreed to stay on and help me for the first, you know, three years and. They did just that to make sure that I would be able to take on a department with not too much of a hitch. Um, Kim was instrumental in our investigations, and uh we're gonna miss him dearly. I was hoping I'd be able to hang on to him a little longer, but. You know, you know, you know, so. Um, so we're back, so we're now, we're going out to recruit for a supervisor. Um, the reason I would like to, um and I've talked to this about this with a couple of you, but. The reason I would like to eliminate, uh and not eliminate, but just not fill a lieutenant position and fill a sergeant position. Is a sergeant position would would put the person in the union, which would then garner them an opportunity to get overtime. And to get um comp time. Um, and and that would be beneficial for that position. Um, Lieutenant Reddy, some of the, some of the things, and and he's not here today, but. Some of the things that he uh told me that I could share was his frustration that. Um, he was getting called in handling cases, at any, at any hour of the night, any, any time he and I are coming in. And because he was salaried, he couldn't get any overtime. So, senior staff like um Scott and Roger, they actually make more money than him. In the long run, because they're making overtime, they're, you know, garnering comp time, um. So, this would be very beneficial in recruitment, I think, I mean, the wage is not. I mean, it it's not as competitive as it could be, but uh staying within the budget that we've already set. Um, if we were to turn it into hourly, Kim would have made just over thirty two dollars. Um, I'd like to, you know, look for a sergeant doing the same thing. As far as job description, nothing is gonna change, it's the only thing changing is the title. Um, he would, this, he or she would be doing the exact same job, they would be in the rotation just like Kim was. The only benefit would be, would be that. One of the things that I know Jay will have a question of, and and some of you may as well, would be what happens in my absence, so. Um, being in the union, you can't then be a supervisor that has. Um, personnel hours. However, in management, right, important to the union, and and I know this is true, because. From the old system, when I was in Darlington, when the chief was absent, he would just. Make an acting chief from within the union, and that's covered under management rights. So I would just have to formally do that, you know, whenever I leave, and then let everybody know. So I would just have to formally do that, you know, whenever I leave, and then let everybody know who's acting chief at that time. In talking to the union, doesn't look like this would be very hard to do, it's a memorandum of understanding, we have to. Bring it back here, but I don't wanna wait on that for a month, I I need to start recruiting right now, and doing the timeline. I mean, I probably won't see a hire until August. If we do a thorough investigation, background check, all the things. Um I'm not gonna see someone here till middle of August. Um and so that really has put us in a, in a predicament, because of. We also have a some an officer on medical leave, so we are. We are bare bones, you know, very, very stressful time for my department and myself, so I'd like to get moving on this. Yesterday.
Judy?
Um with hiring of this position, and I know ones on medical leave, are we still short staffed any, or like?
No, we would be, based on our budget, we have, we would have every, everything would be. Be okay, you know, we would be back to full staff once we get our persons back from medical. Are we short staffed, yeah, we we are in desperate need of an addition loss or without a doubt, and I mean. Every, just since I've been here, we've had people on medical leaves, medical leaves, medical leaves, and more medical leaves, and. We don't have backups, so um I'm covering, like right now, I'm literally doing two jobs, I'm doing the lieutenant job and my job. I've got, now I've got a handful of investigations that are coming in. So I'm, I'm staying up till almost midnight, just trying to do my homework, and here we go in the budgets this s- season. It's very, very difficult, I can't even explain it how difficult it is for them. However, no other department parks is going through it, we're all gonna be going through it, so I'm a team player, we're gonna keep. Keeping our heads up and keeping our staff going, we do have um. In order to just simply cover, you know, I have over a hundred and twenty hours of overtime. I've offered it to my staff, I'll be able to cover all seventy of those hours, and I'm picking up the other fifty somewhere. Now I'm gonna have to work extra weekends, whatever. I'll make it work, we're gonna make it work, it's just right now, I just wanna get moving on this sooner than later, I don't want to stall. I'm like that. But I just can't.
Any other questions? I've got a couple. Uh I think part of your agreement with the union with the acting, it should be an acting lieutenant, not an acting chief. And and we should come up with. The added dollars per hour when you're in an acting position. And we need to lay out what that acting position can do. That would be number one, and. Uh I don't know if there's anybody here, at one time, we had a sergeant. We demoted that individual. And the agreement was that we would not have that sergeant, another. Higher, you know, make a sergeant position, now that is. Fairly old, and I don't think, but I would at least do some checking. To make sure we don't get caught on that, that's why we went to a lieutenant for two reasons, as you mentioned. Get someone out of the union so they could back up the chief one, they're not here, the second was. We weren't allowed to go with the sergeant, because that was part of the agreement with the demotion. That we want to have a sergeant position, but that was many, many years ago.
The guy that was demoted is no longer alive, so.
Well, yeah, I understand, yes, I understand that, that's not a lot of. That was an agreement that we had with the union. So I'm not sure if that had, I just, I I just wanna throw that out, international litigation, if someone has a. I don't know if that had an end period, as long as he was hired, we wouldn't have a sergeant. Or it was for eternity. I would challenge that, but anyways, I just throw that out, that that was part of the discussion and a deal that was made. Um so I I I I will support this, but if those are the two things we have to kind of work out. Is making sure, and if you've talked with the union, they're the only ones that are gonna do the grievance on it.
I will, I will make sure both of those are covered sooner than later, maybe we'll have to bring back the the union memorandum anyway.
Okay.
So, and whether we hire a sergeant or lieutenant, I mean, it's just the title in this department. If we were multi-tiered like the Madison, it would.
Well, it makes a difference here, because one is salary, one is. Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I will make sure those things are covered, I would, I would want support for a sergeant, I mean. I had a good conversation with the union, I I don't think that that's an issue. And the other thing, the first topic, that can be ironed out very easily.
Yeah, I just wanna throw those off that, we should have that ahead of time, Cameron?
I would like to make the motion to. Uh pretty cheap, Tony, to post the village police department sergeant job.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, any discussion?
One question I have regarding overtime, um. Is there like a cap or something?
Yeah, I only have ten thousand dollars.
Okay, I mean, well, no, he's asking. You can't stop paying people overtime when you're on a month, he's a union member, so by, so federal standard, you know, labor laws. Would they make overtime, they make overtime, no matter what our budgets are, that's what you were asking.
Being, my question being that if you had someone that wants to come here as a hard charger, wants to suck up all hours if they can be in short staff. Would we be end up paying someone ninety thousand dollars a year?
So here, so here's, I mean, my job, not only everything that we're, that I'm also doing cases and all that. My main job also is to make sure our budget is undermined, so I keep track of that, every two weeks, I'll check in the budget. Right, so if I see that our budget is going close to that ten thousand mark. I had a conversation with Chayz last year, because we were struggling due to other medical issues, but um and so. I, and and let me kind of tell you, we don't have those issues, people just, they don't want them. Um I'm really struggling to get them to pick up two or three shifts. You gotta remember, their cycle of work is six days on, three days off, and so if they pick up overtime, they would be working, it's not even. Mentally okay, because you got six days on, if they pick up two shifts, they're gonna get one day off, and then they gotta come back for another six. So I wouldn't even allow it, you know, so that, that's not gonna happen.
I just wanted to make sure that that someone has added on that, because I've heard of. People doing such a thing, so.
Right, but in this case here, if one officer decided to do the seventy hours of overtime. They certain, I mean, there's nothing against the law, as long as you pay them time and a half, they can sign up for as many as they want. Right, I mean, he could control the the schedule, but as in. You know, if there's only one person that likes overtime, because you're right, you know, I I lived, there's some officers that made a hundred and fifty thousand. Because they took every overtime job.
We don't have anything written in the union that um that says overtime goes to senior staffers, so it's. Been pretty much whoever asks for it, whoever is the most readily available for it, um. Since I've been here, there's only been one officer, and he retired, who took on as much overtime as possible. What I seem to find with that is people that are near retirement are trying to increase their retirement. So that's when, so they take their top two years, and then they try to, you know, they take on all the retirement, or all the overtime that they can, but. I I, we don't have staff like that, but it is looking, I can't wait to do overtime, and they, even that, we have a policy, and so if you are gonna be over. Your shift, you need to get through by the bottom. And you can't just have overtime, you never. Especially if they can cover that the next shift, it's not.
And I would have asked in that agreement that officers get first shot at overtime than the supervisor.
The only time, the the situation with the supervisors fall out for major investigation.
Right.
So that will trump that, but.
Yeah, you know, I understood, but if you have a vacant shift.
Otherwise, you better sit on Hillbilly Road and buy a box of tickets.
Alright, I have a motion in a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, same? Alright, discussion and possible action approval to post village parks and recreation department position. Uh recreation coordinator.
I have a motion, I have.
I'm gonna say.
I'm making a motion to approve this presently. I'll start here, alright, I have a motion in a second to approve the. Posting of the Parks and Recreation Department position for Recreation Coordinator, is this a value, this one, I would be tempted to put on. Consent agendas too, I mean, we're filling a position, so it's been budgeted and everything in the future, I mean, we've been doing.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Cause I can tell you, three and a half months ago, I did exactly what you did.
Right.
And you guys land-based, not changing the job description, not changing the duties, and not coming up with where the money's. I'm, I'm, I can't. So.
Right, we can't keep going back and forth, we we used to have it on there, we took it off, so now I think we need to leave it off, I think we need to leave it here.
That's fine, that's fine, just going at all. So. Well, are there any questions for Mike?
I guess that one question, it was just. You're gonna post this at twenty dollars per hour, right? So then why does it say the current salary range is thirty-seven to fifty-two?
Because the salary range that you all approved for this position is thirty-seven thousand eight forty-eight to fifty-two ninety, I'm telling you, I'd like to post it at. Forty-one thousand.
Alright, I get it, okay, so when you say you approved this position at that amount.
You approved that salary range for this position.
Like a long time ago, or?
And approved everybody's wages within the scale, but they didn't put together. And this, that's what that position's about.
Okay, I guess I don't know about the scale, then I don't remember. So, okay, I was wondering where that came. Okay, thank, cause I was, but, that's what I read, I'm like, like, I don't know what this means.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, same? Don't move. Alright, number eight, discussion and possible action. Uh village banner policy update. You wanna give a little on this?
Sure, um so I tried to write up a memo here to kind of cover exactly where we are on this matter, um so um. Shortly before the Trout Days event, um. Some eye hooks were added to the village entrance signs, which I tried to put a picture up here. Um and I think this was a conversation that was being had for a while, related to there used to be just sticks or stakes in the ground in front of the village sign. Um and this events that would come up uh within the village limits, sometimes people would place those signs up there. Some of them kind of blew down, it was kind of recommended, and we put it up onto the actual sign, um so that was. Getting discussed, and then it was added, so I think at this point, um it's kind of a. Situation where we would benefit from having a policy in place of who can hang that sign when. Um especially when there might be weekends like this weekend upcoming, where there might be a special event, um and then there might be. Another group that wants to also, and then we're gonna have competing interests about who at some point wants to utilize that sign, and who got it first, and. When they can post it, um what the village does have is a Main Street sign banner policy at the present time. Um so that was included within the packet. My recommendation would be after you discuss tonight, whether or not you wanna make an amendment to that. Um we could add that policy to that, or just simply create our own. Little policy related to the entry signs and banner displays.
Cameron?
Um my first thoughts reading this is, it feels a little weird that it's come to the board in this. Way, is there any reason that the planning committee shouldn't get a whack at this first, and then bring something back after they?
You guys asked for things to be here, that would be inappropriate, if you wanna uh. Refer this to the planning commission, that would be fine, but we, we've, we made that deal with, that everything come to you, so.
That's, and that's perfect, so I'd like to make the motion that uh the planning commission, Dave, uh uh flush this plan out. Um okay, and then bring it back to the board.
Alright, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Alright, I have a motion in a second to refer the village banner policy to the planning commission.
Doug, uh first, I just wanna discuss the sign for number one, I think with the hooks, it looks a lot better than stakes and garbage. Originally, that was going to say. Then some bronze and some other beautiful materials, gateways, the driftless, so I do think it's much more appropriate to have the right size. For the sign, and I think there are many opportunities. That it could be used for a couple of weeks or a month a year, I think it's a big improvement, and I'd like to.
I just wanted to know why the the fees.
Well, the fee was tied to the overhead.
Okay, and again, why, why is there?
Because there's a cost involved in hanging it. And and you gotta go and get permission from DOT. So there's a lot more administrative work and time. Uh a volunteer can't control the banner.
Whereas like this.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this was.
No, no, wait, no, and like I say, that's part of the, what? Instead of starting from scratch, we, because what you have to worry about is. When you open the door to this, then where are the boundaries? So who are you gonna say no to? So we thought this policy deals with a lot of that, so we would just do a hook on to it, you know. That was what Brian and I talked about, but we brought it back here.
Yeah, I think it was good to have a thing to start with, but yeah, obviously you won't charge. Yeah, I think planning commission will flush that all out.
But also, this was, well, I'm on the commission, so I don't know what they're, yeah, just to have.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I got some ideas, but I don't wanna, we're not gonna modify this, so, alright, so. I have a motion, I, oh, I have one other.
My uh my question is, and whether or not this deals with these banners or other banners, but like I see banners that come out like on highway two. Or coming to top to like baseball, how are those banners put up, is that a? And if somebody just went and just put it up?
Well, yeah, they put up, because we really don't have a banner policy. Like, we have a sign policy.
Oh, we have the overhead banner policy.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying, that's what, okay, the only reason that's, this is on here, is we needed to have something. Cause I didn't wanna start from scratch and build a policy here at the board. Cause it's three, four pages long, and this is eighty percent there, we just have to modify it.
So would this banner policy that you're doing for that also include the entrances?
I don't, I I don't know. I I'm not sure if they fall under banners or they fall under signs, I I don't know, we have to, we'll have to just look at the ordinances and bigger word.
This is a powerful joke, but Michael, it does have a very detailed eye with signs and banners and all this stuff, so again, maybe get something right by M first.
Welcome to come to the planning commission, or send us an email on whatever he wants, it's it's your, you're asking me questions. And I don't have the answer, because we haven't even talked about it yet, at the planning commission.
I can do my motion on the table right now and put it there.
Right, to refer it, so that's where I think it should stay, and then.
So I have one other quick question, that banner, would that have to be approved by the DOT sometime? And I think all of them just fall under a temporary sign policy, to be honest with you.
Well, that, I'm not gonna argue that, because that is another option, I I would, if. We, when we and I decided to put this on, we figured. Banners was the word, and we had something that dealt with banners, so we didn't wanna bring the sign policy, because that's. Twenty-seven pages long.
Well, just go and read the repair, talk about temporary signs, and I think it might mostly be covered already.
It might, yes, I am very familiar with that. Alright, so will, any other discussion?
I don't know, Jay, maybe I'm happy now that I'm.
All in favor, say aye, aye, all opposed, same? Don't move. The whole sign thing does. Discussions, uh impossible action, annual village ethics acknowledgement form. Uh Cameron, you brought this up, so why don't you lead?
Yeah, um so I was doing something completely different, looking at deposit schedules for public safety committee. Um and then just happened to cross upon this ordinance. I was like, I should read through this and and figure out what's going on with it, and the thing that really caught me was at the bottom. Was very explicit, so so uh bill draw chapter six point one three is is the ethics um agreement that all elected officials and employees. And committee members and all that stuff are supposed to follow, the part that really caught me was, it was like very explicit in saying that. Annual, um by April thirtieth. Uh, everyone is supposed to sign a sheet that says, yes, I have read and I agree to the ethics terms, uh, you know, I've been on the plan commission before I was on board. I, I've never had to sign a document. That said that stuff, so this is just a. We should probably start with that, um, I did talk to Brian a little bit about this and we thought it was a little weird, cause I mean technically employees are also supposed to sign this annually by April thirtieth. I didn't include them here, just because that seemed like kind of a bigger step. I figured like this, like a. Small step would just be like, let's take all of our elected officials and committee members and just have them sign something and start moving on this. Or we change the ordinance. I'm okay with that too, but just we haven't. I just saw this and I'm looking at it and I'm following.
He's absolutely correct. Comments, Doug?
So my thought process when reading through it was, it would be great to have it added to the employees back there. Left it, we have to do a signature on it.
Yeah, cause we just, that just says like we're in honor of the citizens and state constitution.
So that's deal with the politics.
Yep.
I, I'd like it to be. Integrated in something we already do inside of a separate. All of a sudden, everyone gets on these papers.
Beauty.
And I think for the employees, they should have to sign it when they start, not, not they really have to sign it every year.
Yeah.
So I do think they, do they sign it now when they start?
For the ethics form, I don't think there is.
We had a hard time.
Oh, okay.
So this, yeah, maybe we just have to do one off here and then we should put the further discussion topic on what to do in the future or come or something.
Well, for, to me, the big question is, does it have to be done? Yearly, because while that. Our elections are for two years, so. The, the question is, do you just have to do it? One time when you're in office or on the committees? I mean, I, again. That, we have a lot of people on committees and to do that every year, then someone's gotta do the administrative work to make sure everybody's doing it. Can we just maybe change the ordinance that the first time you're on board or the committee, you sign that and that's good for as long as you're on that particular committee or the board?
An employee.
Yeah, employee, yeah, yeah. I was trying to keep that, uh, separate, um. But you're right, that should be in the packet when you sign. I think that to me makes more sense than trying to go around every. You know, April and trying to get, you know, forty people to sign these and then you gotta keep them somewhere. You know, someone's got it, someone has to be. The shepherd for accountability and. I, I'd rather just have them do it once and that's good for as long as they're on their committee or board, so.
Or if we change that, that's. Ordinance for whatever reason.
Yeah, I would change the ethic.
No, no, I'm saying if we may. Instead of just saying this is good forever, saying this is good forever, or if the, um, ethics, uh, code changes.
Oh, yeah, one, one, just question is, do we wanna make it a little bit more reasonable where it's not every single year?
Sure.
Yes.
Agreed.
Okay, and do we ever find the actual form?
Oh, okay. So many things that they fill out this form and the forms don't exist.
Yeah, I, for some reason, back in the nineties, I think it's signed one. Now that I think about it, it's fairly simple and we can come up with something as.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I don't know if I would put the forfeiture in there. I would refer to the state statute that you're pulling that out of.
I, I pulled it out of our ordinance. That's all that, our ordinance said that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, that's odd, cause usually we have the forfeitures tied to the forfeiture schedule.
If you scroll up. Just to the first, like, one page up, I copied and pasted the relevant part out of the. The ordinance.
Oh.
Yeah, right, all I did was copy it, set it right there, right?
We'll take a look at that, cause I have to remember, we pulled a lot of the forfeitures. I'm gonna put them into a schedule, cause otherwise every time the. Forfeiture change, we'd have to go through all the ordinance and. So we put it all, and I'm pretty sure we still have an ordinance with all of the, the schedule of forfeitures.
Are you just, are you gonna take? This back to Paul or something to?
Uh, well, what, I think what I'd like to do is take it to have it, uh, dark with staff. You know, because I, I'd like to hear. Uh, how it's gonna be managed, who's gonna manage it, you know, with, get their ideas before we put something out there. But yeah, we'll eventually bring it back.
Okay.
But I, I do think staff, cause they're gonna be the one. Taking care of this. I'd like to get their input before we tell them something. And I, I like to get Paul's idea. Um, he might have a good form too.
Um, you know, and then, so I, I think staff is one thing and I didn't even include them. In here, because again, I, I know that, you know, I, I agree with everything you just said about, you shouldn't have to sign that every year if you're important here. Is there anything short term you wanna do for elected officials right now, or do we just want to wait until the ordinance is?
I'd say we didn't wait. I mean, that's my opinion, otherwise. By the time we get everybody signed and everything, we could be changing it. So I, I, I would, I think it's great that you brought it up as something. We could put out the staff meeting. In June and I would think we'd be able to have something by the June meeting.
Yeah, I think that, I'm not.
I mean, it's not complex. But I, I think it needs to be fixed, cause. If you have an ordinance, you should follow it. If not, then change it to what can be. What's reasonable. Okay, now that makes total sense. Is everybody good with that?
Sorry, I came across this.
No, this is exactly what we need. I mean, this happens all the time. Michael Junior.
I know. Looking at deposit schedules, I'm coming out and.
All right, so we, we don't need to take any action. We'll, we'll, we'll just move it forward. All right. Had discussion and possible action, create, creation of village across plains wellness center committee. Doug, this was yours. Why don't you take it?
Uh, certainly, um, so what we're trying to do is amendments for the wellness center. Um, the mission of the committee is to gather data, communicate the vision and details for all residents at village staff. Doing some transparency, visiting sessions facilitated, available in both live events and online. Um, and the proposed committee members, I have six confirmed, but I'm, I'm hoping I'm not entertaining. I have one or two very good prospects. I'm very interested in. Um, and I think. I'm in favor of the, the wellness project for a number of reasons. Um, we are also asking for eight to ten hours of back east time. Per, per month. After week, per month. Um, they'll organize and do a lot of the communications, the village website, some social media work. And then a number of key points are pretty straightforward. Um, the biggest thing I'm in favor of is the more multi-use. That facility is, I believe, the better opportunity that is for village residents to use, for us to have some rentals and some revenue. Outdoors to seniors can use it. I think it's a gift and investment in the village, so, you know, I'm in favor of that, and I think the one thing we definitely miss on from our volunteer team and group. Um, is some of that website and social media piece that I think I can enhance. It's a small. Um, ask, um, and I think it's an important thing.
All right. Let's do discussion before we have any type of. Okay, Cody.
Have you discussed that with Becky and she's willing to do it?
I have, I've discussed it with both Mike. Brian and Becky, Becky. Um, Becky actually gave some feedback and reduced the hours and. My original aspect is kind of fourteen or something like that, and she actually thinks it more on eight. I said part of that depends on who I do that.
All right, any other questions?
How are you going about choosing, selecting people for it?
Uh, selecting people who. I think will do good work and get it done, not trying not to have any baseball people on. Trying to focus on more multi-use. I would gladly take volunteers.
Well, I just noticed that it's. All men minus Becky.
I, my roster, I'm very few now, I think.
Okay.
And in fact, I've already talked to Judy and I've already asked her to give me.
I mean, I know of people who I think would be very interested, but I think having it during the work day limits.
So, and the work day is. But to me is out of respect for the back to his market. So, that's why I also allow them to do the work day and some of that would be why I allow them, I think. That was my reasoning for starting during the work day. Also, Michael, you enter. And giving us feedback and. You know, the input. So I wanted to try to do the work day, was my, that was my reason for that.
Any other questions? Cameron?
I, I guess, yeah, my biggest, well, it's not even concern, but it's just, it's, it's. Becky's time, but it, you know, again, we've already spoken to Brian and Brian says that that's fine, cause I mean, she's also been corporate too, right? So we're. Putting a lot on her, so. I guess, and she's not here, but you're her boss, so. Well, actually.
Well, actually, Bobby is.
I did have concerns.
Okay.
Um, so it sounds like she's just gonna do love and friends. Task that he asked.
Becky is online here as well.
Oh, yeah.
I'm here.
I mean, guess, I guess Becky, you can go for yourself, but Bobby can overrule you.
She does that sometimes. Yeah, I think that the things that they're asking for are things that shouldn't take me very long to do. Um. And, and I think the, um, the big thing is just gonna be the meetings during the day, which I don't think will be a big deal either.
Um, I had two other.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh. Well, this one is super gigantic and probably not worth anything, but you said that December twenty twenty village board meeting. Voted in favor of the land. That was actually the November meeting. I don't know how important it is that this charter has a right to be taken seven times, but, um. There's that. And then the other thing is just the third bullet point down, right? This is the thing I keep. Screaming from the rooftops, right? I mean, this is, uh, this is a bold statement. Revenue from the new building is conservatively estimated. If you double the building operational, that's again. I mean, just applying the same things I do with parenting my six-year-old, like, you know, trust but verify, like, I, you don't actually have a business plan or data around that, right? And then I, uh, whenever the wellness center comes up in the community, at least when I'm talking about, they're deciding hitters that moved from. Um, indoor baseball to, to, um, pickleball, pickleball and other stuff. So it just, again. I think a lot, and I know this committee's gonna be working on this, but a lot of this committee hinges on. The profitability of this building, right? And, you know, we keep saying it's gonna be, it's gonna be positive, it's gonna be positive, it's gonna be positive, and I think I. And probably who jumped in the village would be put at ease if we could actually know that for sure. I understand, not at the point where we can know that. Or investigating that.
I mean, I don't feel it's a whole thing. I feel it's a truly conservative statement. I feel it could be re-reported on the expenses. The biggest expense. Typically is overhead or a building.
But on staff.
No, typically an expense on a project like this is the building. Construction, construction of the building to. The operating expenses are around four, twenty-five thousand dollars a year. I don't think we're gonna have any problem more than doubling that conservatively. Probably three or four times that.
Okay. As long as, whenever we get to a point where we can look at the offerings in the building. And look at a business plan that, that confirms that it'd be happier.
Well, I, I mean, Mike, would you like to make a comment, or can I ask you on your professional opinion, um, revenue for a bonus sum in the case?
I mean, in general. I mean, it's, it's a very, I, I haven't provided any of you any of the business plan, because if it's something that. Done by myself and blind foundation, but it's something.
Okay, great.
Um, obviously there was expanding the remote program opportunities and offerings out there, but they can come up expensive. And they're gonna come with a lot more expensive than you could really, you know. I, I have a hard time really giving you a good number on that, but I do believe that it will be utilized by the community as.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not expecting a number right now. And again, I'm hoping this committee, part of what they're gonna be doing is, is, is ironing that out, especially when we get down to. This is what's in the building. Um, for sure, right? It's, but yeah.
All right. Anybody else? Did you wanna say something?
I was just gonna say, I'm kind of with Cameron. I'm very apprehensive about this and the numbers working out, um. I, yeah.
Well, I, I.
I'm really scared that she's not gonna. Yeah.
Judy did.
One of this. Besides you two, um, I think everybody listed as a gift and a lot of it's free. Like they say, it's free except for the labor. But the labor is, we don't know what the labor is yet as far as how many hours we're really gonna be open or so forth. Are we only gonna open when we charge and so forth? I mean, we don't know what that is. Like you say, that's the unknown.
A gift is, is great. Like, I'm not wanting to shoot down a gift, but. I mean, is, is it the community center over there? Is that what this maps to or no? No?
No, the pool is the less cost and it's kind of money.
It hasn't cost us a thing. Yeah, I mean, so it's.
What costs us a lot of money to maintain and operate every year.
Yeah.
We're talking about building a new pool, right?
So I understand, I understand all of that, but I'm just, all my comments is. Is, you know, everyone says it's a gift, it's, it's a gift, it's a gift, and I appreciate that, but like. You know, if it isn't a priority and it isn't, um, you know, what the public wants and all this stuff, right? We just, that, that's the stuff that I have voiced concerns about. I've talked to Doug about. I am confident that this committee is gonna go out and be pursuing some of that stuff. But you're accepting it, you know. Blind, because it's a gift, doesn't feel right to me.
No, and. Myself and then Doug. I think it's been very clear, at least of all the early discussions I had with Jim Nunn, who started it and, and that and, and the talk. It is very clear and they have them on board that this has to be at zero cost to the village. We are, and, and when I say that, I'm talking about financial in the sense.
Mm-hmm.
We are making a donation of the land that is a huge value, all right? That's our. In-kind. Contribution to the project. I think it's too early to be doing a lot of debate. Uh, if it's gonna make it or not. I think what needs to be clear, and I, I'm in the same boat, it, it has to be. Neutral. We cannot afford to add on costs. Or this with what we're coming up against in the next couple of years unless the state all of a sudden. Gets their act together and does something. So. I'm hearing you and I'm agreeing with you. It's just me too early. To have that discussion. So I think the statement can be, I'm supportive of this as long as it's cost neutral to the village. In the operation part of it. And like I say, that's kind of where I am with this. This is an outstanding gift. I would not. Turn it down, especially if it can be cost neutral to the package. I see no reason not to do that. And I think giving the land is a small investment to get something like that asset in the village. So that's where I am. But it's just way too early to do it. We have to let their group go. And see what it is, and then you can do. We can do all kinds of calculations. Are we gonna charge a membership to it? Is it gonna be free? I clearly want non-residents to start paying more, you know, so maybe it's free for residents, membership for non-residents. I mean, there's all these things we have to. Work out and it's just too early to do it right now.
Yeah, I totally, totally. If I wasn't saying that, I meant it.
Yeah, and there's always, you know, like you say, you got the two things. You got the cost, the expense and the revenue. So we just gotta figure out where all that's gonna fall.
Doug, the biggest thing I would say is. Wanaki, Verona, Pleasant Creek, all these places that have a unique space. It's full environment and gain revenue to those communities. And I don't see any way. This wouldn't. Double, triple the expenses and like you will certainly take care of that, but I think that's the only place you never annually. For a whole village. Um, there's events you can do there that you won't be able to do anywhere else. Um, and I want it and have always wanted it to be multipurpose and that some of the mailings and Jim taking initiative. I truly think it's a doing that million dollar investment in marketing. And while it is great for the plan, the building is gonna be given to the community, what improve that and pay for it. So it's a revenue source that keeps going to help people actually programming. Maybe there's some opportunities to share some space, connect for the future.
And other things. And the other thing that builds my confidence a little bit, we can, it's, it's done in the private sector. Eva, they're making a whole lot of money, right? The one in whatever that place is, that wellness center in Stoli. You know, you know, there's places out there that the private sector is doing it and making money. Now, they're probably a little bit more efficient than government. But, you know, if, if you, if the private sector can do it, we should be able to do it. Especially because we don't have to pay a mortgage. Yeah, go ahead, Sarah and Judy.
I. I think, I think there could be a lot of great things with it. My concerns come with. The land itself is that I'm very concerned about the lack of land that we have in this village. And I think all the things we've, that everyone in this year wants, put it there, I'm just concerned that we're not coming up with that overall plan. And like, I, I would guess our priority right now is police department. Tom Hall, I want to, I guess maybe. Tom Hall, I want to, I guess maybe you all know a lot more about it than I do, but I would like more definite plans. To know about that. Make sure that's a certain thing before we. Start building, I mean, I mean, very limited land in this village. Like, that was at my first meeting, we talked about how. It's very few places where we can build. And so. While I think this wellness center could fit there, I just want to make sure we're planning ahead. So that everything's positioned, so that it could all work.
You and I should then meet with Bill, so you get up to date, because Village Hall has, we purchased the lot.
I guess, like, what? Are there plans for a village hall that will be built there?
Yeah. Not a.
But you know where it's going, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So I, I'm just. The, you know, I would like to see how these things could work together and fit in that space rather than one person going and building. And then down the road saying, oh, I wish we would have positioned.
I, I woke up with the same nightmare like last Thursday night, so I was gonna actually talk about it. I was gonna add it as a future agenda item just to talk about. Like, I know, I know where we were planning on putting the things. But do we have any contingencies if, you know, all of a sudden, you know, Village Hall and Police Department won't fit there for whatever reason? I don't know what comes up, like. You know, just making sure that when we put one building down, it doesn't close doors to future.
Yes, you were.
But again, I think we're a little early on now. Judy, go ahead.
And two people say to me today what they don't like about our village boards, we're against businesses. And I said, we're not against businesses. Yeah, you are. You're against it. You don't want people coming into town. And to me, this community center will bring people into this town and they will stop if they live with me. They'll stop at Quick Drive, they'll stop at Culvers, they'll stop at other places in the town. And it brings them in. If it's another team they're playing against or whatever it is. I feel like that's another revenue to bring, bring, bring people to our town to show them to it and they can use our businesses. And that is our way of showing our businesses in town. We do wanna bring people to town. We are trying to. Just support our businesses.
Well, I, I'm hopeful there'll be a couple of staff offices for the rec supervisor here and some of the rec staff at the ones. So either the village municipal building, the new building will be all of us office days and or it'll have some extra offices for future growth.
Go ahead and say, I, I think we're all kinda getting the cart and turn the horse too, because we're talking about forming a committee here for visioning sessions, right? So that's gonna be part of what this committee is doing. Um, I'm all for this thing, just like what Judy was saying, it brings people in. Um, I know a couple of people from the Middleton and Verona areas. Who had already, had said like they've heard about, like, there might be this thing going on, that we. We book it for lacrosse if we could, all winter. Like, we're talking about something that for. Three hundred and sixty-five days a year could feasibly be open, that weather, you know, it. I think this thing is a wonderful thing for the village. And will definitely bring people to our village from other communities.
I don't, I don't think anyone is not saying that. I'm just, I think. I think at least again, Jay, Jay summed up, my, at least my feelings perfectly is just, I think it's, we need more data for me to feel really comfortable with the decision. And the committee's doing that.
Yeah, exactly.
Exactly what your reports is, right?
We need a motion on this, right?
We have one, and I think we're in discussion.
I didn't think we hit a lot. We did the discussion first, because I, I didn't know how it was gonna go and if people were gonna add then change.
One clarification piece that I wanted to just ask, if the, if we're gonna do this, are we as village staff going to be posting anything on the website? Like we've done in the past with ad hoc committees, like sustainability committee or any.
No, you don't.
There's nothing, I, I'm just making sure I'm on clear on.
Talking about, like, I, we don't do it for the village building.
Right, this one gotta be public. The full visioning committee is, all their stuff is out there. I don't see any reason why this one shouldn't be.
Okay, I, I don't, if they wanna do it that way, that's fine.
Vision sessions are gonna be public.
I'd like to see it go through the, the.
Yeah, but that doesn't have to be staff necessarily. There's a lot of.
Isn't that with the, the idea of being an ad hoc committee though, like you don't, like you don't have to have the formal meeting?
You don't even need to put an agenda.
Right, right. Yeah, but I, if, I mean. If we're doing the full visioning committee right now the way we are, I don't see why we.
But I, I don't see.
That's because of.
I don't see minutes when I looked at it. On, on that, the pool one, I didn't see any minutes when I.
They're all reported and stuff. I don't call their minutes and stuff.
I don't think they're recorded.
Yeah, they are. It's all, it's, it's hiding. My wife had to show it to me. It's in the parks agenda section, not like.
Yeah, yeah. When I went to look for them, I, I didn't see minutes. But anyway, that's a different story. Don't worry. If, if.
I was gonna ask.
If, uh, you have a problem with.
I will be doing the agenda minutes for everything, so you can.
Yeah, I really want them. All I have to do is slide it back, you know, they post them on the website and they post them here, the village.
So can people attend? Are they public meetings in there?
No.
Just be your business hours, but.
And I will take any volunteer that's right, committee, you can send me their name and contact information.
So this is gonna be like a village ad hoc committee? Under the village like that?
So here, here's a challenge, is I have like two non-residents who are business owners.
And, and I think you're okay with that, because I'm not making appointments. And if it gets to where I have to make an appointment, then I have to be a village resident. And you're right, there's been a lot of ad hoc committees that we've had non. Uh, residents on, because you want subject matter experts on it and, you know, so.
The sector, most of our business owners are not, don't live in a town.
Alright, so are we okay with, we're gonna approve this? Committee and Doug is gonna take care of the agenda and the minutes.
And then, then we'll include the eight to ten hours among the Becky's time.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm. Doing this this year. That's why I wanted to have the discussion in case people wanted to modify something.
I'm, I'll make a motion to accept the. Village Cross Plains Ad Hoc Wellness Center Committee chaired by Doug Burner.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Do we wanna amend that to include the public piece? Because that's not captured there.
The what?
The public meeting piece.
I think we can go on the honor system for that, don't you think?
Yeah.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Uh, aye, all of us saying so moved. Okay, discussion and possible action regarding the request for proposals for professional services for repair, renovation. Or replacement of the cross planes pool. I would suggest what we do. Is we discuss. Uh, step one, step two, and then, uh, go into the key name contract if need be. Otherwise, I think it'd be very difficult, uh, get through this. Is everybody okay with that? Otherwise, I'll take another, I got just a suggestion.
I'd like to make the motion that we.
We don't need a motion. Because we're just, the items here, oh, you're gonna make a motion to, okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that we. Um, approve the RFP for phase one, step one and phase one, step two. Uh, for architecture and planning LLC.
I'll second it.
Alright, I have a motion in a second. So, let's start with the discussion.
Mike, do you wanna say anything in the discussion portion of this or?
Obviously, I have my memo. We did have discussion at the pool feasibility of subcommittee level. We talked over both proposals of staffs recommendation as well as they're like providing unite. Then had a meeting with the Parks Recreation Committee after that. Of which they did the same, talked about both phase one and step one and phase one, step two. Brought to you for review and discussion. I'm very comfortable with architecture. Um, never worked directly with Blake, but I agree. Subcontracting, the company that they're using is Careco five, as they work for a lot of these, um, a lot of these other studies. Careco five has been our. Daughter, father. Provided us all their chemicals. Doing our helper jobs, we're all, so we're very familiar with our people.
Everybody else?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Judy.
And I kind of missed it. I thought of a group. Um, do we know where the money is coming from once we know the dollar on the pool?
That'd be a bill of decision. They don't know what those costs would be, so. Be at that point with those for making a decision to the committee levels, whether it be committing for groups, starting a fundraiser. Or borrowing, you know, the capital and human plans of like. We just don't know the actual cost of the project.
There are groups that would like to get going on fundraising, but they're waiting for this information so that they can share with people what their fundraising is for.
So with the pool, people will be committing from where we were told, sorry.
Yeah, it's Cameron, sorry.
And then Cody. Uh, I was just gonna say that, well, answer your question to you, the week, the last village board meeting. We did talk about the absolute earliest we could probably start the pool would be twenty-six. Because that would be when we have staff pretty out from the village hall, police department project. So that would be the earliest we could start the project and we don't know the cost that this was gonna determine, but that wasn't, I guess, what originally we could say, I guess. Answering your question, because we weren't at the last meeting. Um. I thought a lot about this since our last meeting and we talked this a lot there and talked a lot about it here, um. And, and even to just what Sarah was talking about with the wellness center, I think we're doing ourselves a huge disservice, not just eating. All three critical pieces of information right now. To me, those three pieces are, what would it take to renovate the existing pool? To get it up to, I forgot what the exact wording was, but ADA compliant enough to code in good standing, I think it said. What would it cost and what would it take and what are the limitations of building a whole new pool on that same exact spot? And what are the costs and what would we get? Um, uh, to build a pool on a different plot of land, right? I think, I think if we're, I mean, for, you know, a little over ten thousand dollars difference here to not have all three pieces to the public. Like, we're not gonna make any effective decisions with just phase one and step one. I think, I think that, that piece on its own is pretty useless to us, especially as they're probably about a wellness center where that's gonna go. And you know what Jim presented in November had, um, potential pool and stuff next to his designs of phase one and phase two, right? So if you're not getting the engineering started on that stuff, how are we supposed to make effective decisions on the wellness center now in the short term? That's how I'm feeling all of this.
Alright, Cody.
So I was just gonna say, like, with the pool visioning, everywhere we got to, there we had the vision sessions, we had. I think we're at like ten meetings now. Everywhere we got to was, well, how much, how much? And we can look at other prices and say, oh, that one was four and a half million dollars in two thousand nineteen. Okay, was, is that six? We don't have a number, obviously for fundraising, you wanna have a goal and. We wanna raise three million dollars for it. Um, and I do wanna know that this, the twenty-three, seven, seventy-five does come out of the pool improvement fund. So there was money for this, well, for cool improvement, and it's really the only way to. Get any interest in the community until you have pretty pictures. Like, I can't take the pictures here and show them to the community. And this is what we're looking at, because it's at ours. And we don't know what the cost of renovation or total overhaul of the current site, we are down to two sites, Bear Park and the existing site. Um, and I know I, some people I've talked to, they're like, well, if you're gonna spend that money and you're not building it for five years, it's kinda wasting money, isn't it? Like, valid point, absolutely valid point, um. But at the same time, we can't go in, physically cannot go any further without spending the money under your, seeing what we're up against. It could come in at fifty million dollars, it could come in at nine million, we don't know. So, I mean, I try to be a good steward of the tax dollar, but this is the only way we can get that figure. I just wanted to let, I don't know if everyone knows what the pool improvement fund is, but it's. So five dollars from every membership and five dollars from every someone else who put it into this, this account. Started it back in two thousand, I don't remember the exact time. Uh, but it was actually based off of the Bear Park improvement fund, so. Uh, these are the things to be able to, obviously, it's not getting us millions, but it will give us some sort of funding for this type of work.
And how many memberships do we have this year?
Right now?
Well, I can answer what we had last year.
Okay.
We had a hundred and sixty-six residential. Membership, thirty-five non-residential. And one daycare provider for a total of two hundred and one memberships. That must be funny, funny, too. Anybody else? So I, here's, this is not gonna be a surprise to many people, but, uh. I am all for phase one. Uh, getting a cost to what the current pool, what it would cost to fix it up. Uh. I believe phase two is the card so far ahead of the horse. Then came and see the horse in, in the picture, and here's, here's where I'm coming from. So our process in the village for capital improvements is to do a capital improvement plan. Five-year plan, this is the twenty-twenty-three, there's no pool. Uh, in this listed, so we're doing engineering work on, uh, the program. On a plan, an item that's not in the plan. Mike, can I just finish and then we'll let you respond instead of slamming that?
I didn't slam anything. I'm sitting here more or less just.
Okay, can I do, I, I let everybody speak now, I kinda just wanna speak. Um, we put together, we didn't, we hired a consultant to put together a financial plan, twenty-two. Two through twenty-twenty-five financial plan. In this plan, again, it does not mention. Uh, the pool at all in it. So we're doing a multimillion-dollar project that's not incorporated into the financial plan or the capital improvement plan. And here's where I think it's important and where, uh, the value I question. While you say you wanna know how much the pool could cost and what it could look like. There are decisions that I believe this board needs to make prior to, for example, how big we want it. Not that we have to get a detailed eleven thousand square feet or eleven hundred square feet. The, the thing is state statute requires, when a pool gets to a certain size, you have to have so much staff. I believe that is a policy decision that this board should make before we go to a consultant. Is number one. Number two, the whole staffing. We have to look at, because right now we've had difficulty finding staffing even for the size pool that we have. So now we build a three, four million dollar pool. And we can't get the staffing to it and we can't open a brand-new pool because we don't have the staffing to do it. That is not going to look good at all. I think we need to have that discussion. I think we need to look at how is this going to, if we want increased staffing, how is this going to affect the operating budget? We had that concerns with the wellness center. I think that is the same concern you have to have with a pool. If we build a pool that's over that limit that we are right now. And now we have to double our staff, that is an added cost to our operations. And can we afford that? That's another discussion that I believe is a policy discussion, discussion. That the board needs to have before we send this out. And then there's the amenities. In a pool, the biggest costs are your, your tank or whatever they call the main basin. And the second is the amenities. Is it makes sense to have, and that you can look up, you can go on the internet and see how much a slide is, how much those rock walls are. We need to look at what kind of amenities we are, because that's going to dictate. What the size of the pool is. So you now show a pool with a rock wall, a big slide, a diving well. And now it comes out where we can't afford to do that, or it bumps it up to the square footage that we don't have the. And now it comes out where we can't afford to do that, or it bumps it up to the square footage that we don't have the staffing. So it's not like I don't think we need to do this, I just think it's way too early. Now, that's what I'm gonna just say on why I will not be voting for this because I'm not in favor of spending the money. On phase two, and if we're looking at twenty twenty-six, is this engineering even going to be applicable in three years? We're gonna have to redo the whole thing because clearly costs are gonna be different. And then you look at the assumptions under the company that we're looking at, it says owner to provide prior plans, no problem, soil information. But what's not in here is we're probably gonna have to do borings. Cause that's what they're asking for, which is very common. We had to do it for just the Xander Park Pavilion, so that's an added, I think we spent for that small area in Xander Park. We probably spent fifteen hundred to two thousand, that is not in the bid. That's gonna be an added cost, I did not see that in the other contract. Um, I may have missed it, but this one was very clear on what they, they needed, so. I just think we're pushing it and what is the, what is the hurry? To do it now versus doing phase one, getting that back? Cause ask yourself, if it comes back in phase one, that is gonna cost two hundred and fifty thousand to fix all the problems in the pool. I don't think anybody here is an expert in that, but if it comes back to two hundred and fifty thousand, would we still be looking at a new pool? If it comes back to five hundred thousand, would we be looking at it? That's a discussion I think this board needs to have. Prior to going and get engineering on a brand new pool, so I'm not saying I'm against it, I'm a backer of the pool. I just think we need to do things in steps. So we understand and we don't waste money. And I think I'm all for phase one, hundred percent, I believe that's the next step, I think that plays a role. In between that time, I think we need as a board to have a discussion on some of these policies on what we're willing to take the risk on. All right, I'm done with my lecture, Cody and then Mike.
I have one question as to why you're saying the board for these policies when you told us to go start this subcommittee. And bring back to the board, we've already discussed.
Well, you want an a, a honest answer? I was actually hoping to get back from you what it would be at, I think it's five thousand square feet or whatever the first is. This would be option one, keeping the pool at this because of this, these are the pros, blah, blah, blah. The cons are we limit on what are new amenities, okay? The second would be, what amenities can we fit into those different sized pools? Now, you may have discussed that and that would be fine, but I believe. We are the ones responsible for voting for the money, so I think we should listen and hear what you say and, and, and have a discussion. I haven't seen anything, in September, we voted this down as a board. The feasibility study, it was on year, it was voted down. So seven months later, we're back with it, but I have not received any more information. So to change it, so that's, that's why.
We've agreed, Mike and I, and the committee, parks and rack have all said, we're gonna keep it under the aquatic facility. So sit, talking about staffing, to staff a bigger pool, that's not even on the table, we're keep, we want to keep it. So it's small enough that we don't qualify it as an aquatic facility.
But don't you, well, and I appreciate that, but I honestly believe that's a decision that the board should make. Not a committee, committees usually don't make those decisions, they make recommendations to the board. So I believe it should have came back to the board, not, I didn't know that, I, did any of you know that that's what they were referring to on site? How are we supposed to know that unless we get it back, Mike?
So what Cody's referring to is discussions within the committee. As we went along with the vision session.
Okay.
There's no decisions that have been made.
Oh.
Zero decisions.
Oh, okay.
Um, what this feasibility study will do is provide enough information for the village board to decide those concerns. Whether it be staffing, staffing's involved in that, in that step two. Whether it be the size of the vessel, that's gonna be involved in the entire process of what the concept of the facility will look like or what it would be. Those are all things that they are going to take into account. The other part of this is that Jay, you were at the meeting the other night, last Monday. I sat there and showed you the twenty twenty-one capital improvement plan. That has a pool in there for a feasibility study in twenty twenty-three, just right now. And how I brought it to you in, back in September was for that exact reason, because it was in the capital improvement plan. And then twenty twenty-six for a new pool facility for five million eighty thousand dollars. That is exactly what's in the, the capital improvement plan. Somehow that got taken out, I don't know exactly, it wasn't me, but it was in there, that's all I have to say.
Okay, I just want, Mike, it was in there in twenty twenty-one, it's not in there in twenty twenty-three, it's a different board.
Okay, different board, same, same resident.
There's, but all kinds of things.
And it's going to become and what we, what we, what you decided to vote on and how many years out and what you did, that's what I'm getting at. Twenty twenty-three, the capital group plan is completely different than it was in twenty twenty-one.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay, and who, but, but decisions in twenty twenty-one were made on future years out. But in twenty twenty-three, they weren't, so for you to say, sit here and tell the board that it wasn't in the capital group plan, that's what I'm getting at, it was in there.
It's not in the twenty twenty-three capital.
And who decided that?
The board that you guys, hold it, first of all, I have no say on what goes in here, all right? Let's make that perfectly clear. The process is, the department has put in what they want the next five years. The board then approves the year that we're going into. None of us say take this off, take that off, or put it, that is not correct. I'm taking zero responsibility for saying that it's not in here because it's my fault.
That's fine, I'm just saying it's not in.
I know, but I have nothing to do with this.
Well, I want, I do wanna clarify something, I'm sorry, I said we made a decision, but it was pretty much obvious that we can't swing an aquatic center, so. I apologize for that.
No, it's fine.
But it's a new.
And that's right now, that's right now, right? That's the whole point of this discussion is that that's right now. But the village is gonna grow and that pool's gonna be here for fifty years, so maybe it does become, that's the whole thing, I mean.
We don't know enough of what they're gonna provide us with here, right?
I think that was, and a lot of the conclusions we came to is that we are not pool professionals. We don't know how to design a pool, we don't know what's appropriate for a community of four thousand, we'd like professionals to come in. Who has built pools successfully and knows what's appropriate, that's why we want professionals. We want this work done by someone and.
I, and, and I'm not arguing that point, the point for them to be able to do that, they're going to need some information. They're not gonna give us a pool at five thousand square feet, they're not gonna give us a drawing at twelve thousand, a drawing at fourteen thousand. One with, with a rock wall, one with a diving well, one with the splash, you've gotta give them. Information so they can build on it, I agree, once we get there, we absolutely need an expert to do it. But if I, I'm looking at this and what they want, I'm gonna get one. Drawing from what information we give them, I see your camera, I'll get you to it. Um, my point is, we need to give them more information. And those discussions, as Mike said, and we saw Cody, Cody doesn't believe we can go the aquatic center away. Mike says that should be on the table. Well, shouldn't we have that discussion here at the board and make that call? You know, look at the pros and cons, that's all I'm saying, I'm not saying it can't happen, we're just not there yet. I'm not sure what information we're giving this company to draw. And I think we definitely gotta put a, a limit. If they come up with a twelve, fourteen million dollar pool, is that even a serious thing? So, so we gotta, we gotta come up with some type of guideline, Cameron and Judy.
I was just gonna say, everything you were just saying, I mean, like, this is, I can remember you saying most of those same points back in September when we, when we took it out, right? But like, but. The, that, that committee and the parks committee is coming back to us. Because they think they have a lot of, and I trust them, if they, if they got a, a lot of information there that they're, they're ready to work with. The, the engineers and stuff and like, you know, that, I mean, they haven't been twiddling their thumbs for ten meetings or whatever. So just because we haven't necessarily had like a nice, pretty digest. You know, PowerPoint or whatever on everything that that group discussed, I'm not sure that should preclude us. From them, if they, they're ready for engineering, and, and I mean, it's coming out of the pool improvement fund. You know, I, I, I don't really see an issue with that.
Right, Judy?
Um, I'm mixed in a building, I want a pool in those things, don't get me wrong. Um, mine only misses because of two hundred and one people last year that shocked me. I thought like in a town of five thousand people or four thousand or better, we have more than two hundred families and that was with people that don't live in our village. Thirty-five people that don't live in the village. I thought a pool that was more besides, they know, this thing really uses it, but that shocked me. And then the other thing is, I just did a construction loan a year ago. And a year later, it's just a simple little house, it's worth, they just went up a hundred thousand within the last twelve months. So this is what makes me also nervous, if we get these dollar loans and we're not building until twenty twenty-six. And this little simple holster went up a hundred thousand, now I'm worried about what this could go up, like if they do come to us and say it's five thousand, you know, whatever, what will it be like in two thousand twenty? That's only, and that's, I'm just saying that.
Myself, and I wanna respond, I, I would appreciate if you don't use the word trust because I don't think. We're ready to go this, doesn't mean I don't trust the work that they've done. What I'm saying is, I think it's important, when we're talking about a multimillion dollar project. And even the extra fourteen thousand we're gonna spend here, I do believe there's issues. That the board should have a say in, so when we have the engineer do something, it's within what we think we can manage. So I just wanna make that clearer, it's not that I don't trust them, I'm not saying they hadn't done work, they've done a lot of work. I think what we need to do is for them to bring that work here, have an open discussion, because I see my parks director and the. Trustee at difference just on the simple thing of the size of it. So what are we gonna tell? The, the company to do an aquatic center or a pool? And like I say, I'm all for, I wanna make it very clear, I do think the next step is to see how much it's gonna cost to fix our pool. Cause for me, that would have a major impact. If it's two hundred and fifty thousand versus. A new pool that, looking at the ones that they've done are gonna be three to six million, I'd probably go for more fixing the current pool and make it nice. Okay, I am, Sarah?
Mike, didn't you say if that were the phase, we could say, we don't need to do the phase two? Or I'm sorry, not face.
Step two, but not really, because the whole point of it was to figure out what the actual cost would be then for new. If you had, if you knew it's, the concept aspect's gonna be the same, so whether it be an eight lane pool, which is what is talked about in the feasibility study that when you, when they did with the community. Zero death entry, right, those are two major factors within that discussion. The rest of it's all amenities and or additions to, to a complex, whether you need it or not, but you have to think about the rest of the community as well, so that has to be a part of it. It's not like we don't know what the parameters are in regards to what, what the pool will be or how it will be used, we know those things. So. I have.
But let me ask you, what would it hurt to do step one? And see what the results are and then go to step two after that, what's the, go ahead.
Well, the, my car has a major issue and I bring it into a repair shop and they're gonna be, oh, what's gonna do to fix it? I can reasonably make a decision because I generally know what the new car, new car would cost, right? I don't have that here, I don't think anyone has that here, so it's, it's, it's. For, to make any effective decision. I, I want to know the cost to repair, the cost to replace and the cost for new, or, you know, that's a bad example of the car.
No, I understand, no, but, but I think you, if you look at what the pools that they've done. And the cost of what year they did it, I think you have a pretty good idea of what it's gonna cost, but go ahead.
Right, but, but if I'm buying a new car, right, obviously it's gonna be more than my current car. But what am I getting for that, am I getting an electric car now, am I getting, like, there, there's, the, the, the calculus is a little more complicated. I'm not looking like, you know, it's not apples to apples, now it's an apples to oranges conversation where the oranges are presumably better. But now are they worth the delta and the difference of cost? But I can't make any of those decisions without knowing what the oranges are, what I get for it, and then the actual delta in cost.
All right, Judy?
How do you feel though about the dollar going up on cost and all that, from, like, let's say we do get it next month, there's a five million. And we're building this in twenty-six, what happens if it's really tough, I mean, how do you feel about that?
Well, that, I mean, well, we would never know that until we did this. We would never know.
Well, if you did the, if you did the engineering in twenty-five, you'd know what it would cost you in twenty-six.
Correct, but I'm, I guess what I was trying to, yeah, if they did the engineering now, it's all.
I'm doing the engineering, that's our concept plan.
Okay, I mean, they want soil samples, so they're definitely doing some engineering.
Well, if you're just drawing a pitch. They need to know if the land is feasible for the project.
Yes, okay, we, I call it engineering, but that's all right.
But that's some big people.
Just reading changes all the parameters of what you can do. I agree with you, but the question is, why are we doing it now and not waiting until we know when we're gonna build it and then do it?
All right, and if you, if you wanna look at it that way, we might as well just table the project for four years and deal with a pissed off community.
Well, I, 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 I don't think that's, I don't think that is the case, Cody, I think that. You're, you're, you're making it all or nothing, and I think, I'm not opposed to this, it's twenty twenty-three. Right, so I just think there's a lot of decisions that the board needs to make for this to move forward, that's all I'm saying. So I, I mean, we've heard it in many types, go ahead.
By that logic, though.
Okay.
Uh, we're looking at the, uh, police, village hall, police station, engineering starting next year.
Hopefully correct.
What kind of decisions do we need to make between now and then, because that's not far, we got a.
We've already, we've been doing it for two years, and if you want me to lay out. You can go back and look at newsletters and you'll see exactly for the last few years, we have been laying this out.
Laying what out?
The whole building of the police station and village hall. And not only have we laid it out on that, we've also laid out a financial plan. And we've been working on that from probably what, twenty, when did you get here, twenty?
Twenty-two.
In twenty-two, so Bill and I were working in twenty twenty-one, so we, for two years, we have been working on that.
But I haven't, there's no conceptual plans, no engineering.
No, because that's, you're exactly right, because that should be done when you know you're going to build something.
And I would then say, like, like, we need to be making whatever those policy decisions are right now, like.
No, I mean, we do need this, if you look at the set. You look at next year, there is money there for the architect. The architect will do the programming, which is going into the community, talking with staff, talking with you guys, talking with stakeholders. Right, then they will take that information. And they'll know the square footage, which we've known from day one at fifteen thousand square feet. And they will put. A plan together, then they'll bring it back, we'll have that discussion and make changes if we want, they'll bring it back to the community. So we have been doing that, that's all I'm saying that I feel is missing with the pool. Look how much time we spent in getting the land, look how much time we've been looking at the finances. We've been doing this for, for two years. We've been writing grants, we've been showing, I, we have a whole sheet that you should have received on financial indicators. Keeping track of where the interest rate, how much the building is, how much per square foot, all that's been done. Before any engineering.
But that's, now, I. The policy stuff that you were doing, like.
That's not policy, it's planning.
But you were referencing a bunch of policy stuff that needed to happen before we do the conceptual plans for the pool.
Right.
But I'm saying we're not, I mean, doing those policy things for real fall, right?
We have policy on where it went. Correct, did we not vote on it? We voted on purchasing land.
Yes.
We voted on how to pay for that land.
Just, yep.
Right, we voted on getting soil samples, moving the environmental portal, moving the, uh, wetlands, uh, dedication. We have now even pulled up the easement with the fire department, all of this has been going on and building to that point. So when we get an architect, they have this information. All right, so I would be happy if you, if we were going the way we did with it. All right, Mike?
I would be as well, I'd be, I'd be happy if we're going the way as we are with village hall, as we are with the pool.
Where it takes a lawyer to plan?
That, but I would also go with the fact that how much are we gonna try and fundraise for village hall and police station?
We are not probably looking to do, we're doing the grants.
So we're not, we're not gonna be, not gonna go out and do that for the village hall police station, because no one's probably gonna give money to us, right?
I don't know.
Well, highly likely.
We could sell, we could say the community, if you wanted to have your name named after you. You could give us two hundred thousand and it's called the whatever, whatever, community, we could do something like that.
You said it, you could, but my thing is with the pool, we are going to be fundraising for that pool. So whether what we, and and to fundraise, Jamie, you know, for, for fundraising purposes, whether it be for renovation. Or for a new one, you have to be set on what you are doing, you're not gonna be sent money from people. And then tell them like, oh, we're not gonna build this anymore.
Tell me, tell me how much of the pool are we fundraising?
Who knows, that that could be another thing.
We're not setting that twenty percent, we need to raise twenty percent before.
You're the.
That's exactly right, that is the set, if we're gonna fundraise, what is the goal?
Cameron, there's a chicken and egg problem, I don't know, I don't know what the twenty percent is, because I don't know the top list.
Well, no, but you, but but is twenty percent or is it fifty percent, is it ten percent or is it?
You can tell me the top number, I can't give you a percent. I don't know what the top.
Can we, can I call it vote? We need anyone else to do the discussion?
I would vote, I lost, lost my answer quickly, um, what is the fund and who are the?
You just might have. Fifty-one thousand ninety-two.
Alright, we have called question, discussion's over, roll call, please.
Do we need to repeat the volume?
No, so the motion is to do both the contract for this company.
Step one, phase one step, or phase one step one, it's both phase ones.
Yeah, there's so many. There's too many things.
Yes.
Dusty Borner, yes, Dusty Brandon.
Yes.
Dusty Brandon.
Yes.
Dusty Calvert, yes, Dusty Paul McHale.
Yes.
Presently.
No. Alright, motion carries. Alright, discussion and possible action, village department head board meeting report.
Oh, hi, this is Mike again.
Yep.
Um, so I, this came out of actually, um. I was having some, well, related, J J, you you put the transparency topic on the last. Um, board topic, and I was thinking about it more, and you know, I think a lot of our answers uh, here related to like transparency between the board and the public. My answer related more against the board and the the department heads and the staff here. Um, and I was talking to the village president of Marshall, and I was just kinda curious on like how, you know, they run meetings and all this stuff, and this I thought was a pretty good idea. Um. Their department heads simply write a report for every, you know, the big village board meetings. Um, they have the opportunity to speak on it at, you know, the top part of our meeting, you know, we already, you know, we already have a section for. Um, department head, or I guess any other reports, but um, they have a section for that, and then at that point, the department heads can either come up and say. Hopefully you read my report, I'd like to highlight A, B, and C, or they can just get that stuff completely, if it's pretty self-explanatory, gives. All the board members and the public really a chance just to kinda, you know, see what. Uh, you know, problems or um, great things that our departments are doing and and, you know, just. Uh, report totally on their discretion, whatever they want us and the public to grant them.
Okay, Jared, let's, let's, we'll get to you in a sec, let's just get, uh, I don't explain what he's looking.
Right, so again, uh, I I wanna, I want it to be totally, I I don't wanna put like a rubric or a template in front of the department heads or anything like. That, I want, I want them to feel free to contribute whatever they think is necessary, and if that's a very light. Report, great, if it's a larger report of, you know, great big projects they've done, or I'm having these staffing issues or all that stuff, just so we can. You know, be a little more informed about, you know, issues and tell their, you know, crisis, because I feel like that's when they get done, is when we hit a crisis already.
Okay, I just wanna understand, so this would be in addition to the other reports, because the other reports, they don't have to be here in person. They could submit a report.
Yeah, and and.
So, I just wondered, so is this an added agenda item, or you're just trying to expand that particular?
Uh, I would be good with that, if you wanted to add, you know, number six, department head reports, or just kind of bundle it into other reports.
Okay, and and is it a requirement for them to do it, or is it optional?
Uh, optional.
Okay. Alright Judy.
Hey, am I dreaming, do we used to do this, Jerry? I swear we did used to do such a thing, right? Then we got rid of it, do you remember why? We did. Oh, that wasn't the.
Yeah, I'm not trying to bring back the cow.
Okay, okay. But you're right, we used to do such a thing at that point in time, wherever they did it, oh, and then we got rid of it because of that. So my only other question is, and I've never been to one, but the staff meeting, I'm wondering if we have minutes from the staff meeting, if that would just cover what he's looking for.
Cameron.
I tried that first, and the best I got was that the conversations they have there, they don't necessarily want all of that to be public. So I'm trying to offer a a a venue for them to put something out there, but you know, they get to choose, what do I want to be publicly known?
Well, because at the staff meeting, there's attorneys there, and there's, um. Obviously, all of our engineer and everything, and people come in with projects, so it has to stay as a working meeting. So it doesn't get, because it would really restrict what to be discussed, we'd be going into cold, closed session all the time, and it would be uninteresting. No, no, I I hear what you're saying, but that, he had asked, and that is the reason why, um, that is what it is.
Tony, I kind of.
Well, yeah, go ahead, Tony.
Oh, really, I mean, I already prepared an annual report that you could get, I don't know if you receive that, the monthly. The the having that that option on the agenda already for a monthly, I think that kind of covers it, but I. I mean, I'm not gonna speak to these dads, but if I had an issue, that's where I would probably bring it up in the conversation, to reduce it to writing. You know, it's, it's better to have a full-out conversation, because those kind of, to have opinions and things like that. Um, because I think what you're gonna find is if you, you make it optional. I I think, again, I'm not speaking for these dads, but my guess is, we're already so locked down with the work and extra work. But that's not gonna happen very often, um, if you make it mandatory, then you're going to find limited information. Because it's just gonna become something that, that you, just so we can do it, to get it out of the way, um. Well, I, that's one of the two things, so I think you guys are already covering it in there, and I think everybody has spoken during those meetings. When they have a hot topic.
Alright, let me have Jerry then Judy and then Cody.
You wanna write the document about what we do on a monthly basis, you're gonna pay me to do it. That's a word above what I made it out. If you. Are truly interested. Might maybe give me a phone call and ask. Never ever have I seen your number come up on my phone.
Okay, I don't think I've called you, but I've emailed you a couple times, but I mean, it's not that. But, but Jerry, it's, it's not that I have a like, a. A particular sticking point or anything within the department, and I'm not trying to know this about, I'm like trying to offer you guys an opportunity. And if you don't wanna take it, that's fine, but just if they, look, my department did this great thing, and I think the public should know about it, or. I'm really having issues keeping staff, I'm not paying, I'm like, you know, I, I see these kinds of things. Occasionally, when they come up when they're a crisis, when we're trying to hire someone, but like, you know. Having a tally of, man, I have not been, I have not had enough work and my staff is is just. Super tired, you know, when that kind of first starts, I I don't know, it would, I think it would help me as a policymaker, help me, that's, that's all I'm trying to do is give you guys. Eh, a vector for that.
So you're taking another step to further eliminate the need for administrative?
Uh. No, I don't think so, but, you know, trying to make sure that you you guys are heard. You know, directly for whatever concerns you have, instead of it being lost in translation and telling people. Huh? Brian.
Brian should know if I have issues, and I believe he does.
Yeah.
Right, I have Judy and then Cody.
I was just gonna ask, um, do you feel like if you wanted to, where we do the, like, he talks, I talk, anybody talks. If you were having issues, you all know that you can come at that point in time and say something, right? I mean, it's not like, right, I know. So it's not, okay.
Okay, I appreciate where Cameron's coming from with this, but I also appreciate where Jerry's coming from, like. Three of those men back there are busy all the time, having mandatory or optional, if it's optional, they're not gonna do it, and. Mandating them do anything more to bring to us, I don't see a need for it.
Yeah, this will, won't address this issue exactly, but. You know, we're a four or five million dollar annual revenue expense, you know, small municipality. Uh, when I was at Springs, you know, we were six hundred million dollars, our monthly reviews were ninety minutes, forty-five, fifty pages. Um, it's just different, and, um, I think. We lose some focus, the longer the meetings get, the more stuff that's in the packet, and I know some of it's statute driven, I know some of it's trust driven. Um, but you know, I've always not enjoyed. One person a lot of times will be over the shoulder, or the manager had different opinions, different experiences, while I'm making this role. You know, our department heads have Brian as their lead, and the board, the residents, you know, it's it's a challenge, right? And, you know, back when we did the cleaner hole, I don't wanna go back there either, but one of the goals of that was to be more focused last meetings. Um, I think we have that availability and what information we get, I would be in favor of more things on conceptual planning, which I've said a couple times tonight. Um, I think with the audit we see, and you know, it's my fourth term, so I've seen a lot of audits. Very hard for a village staff to get with a lot, so I I think some of the redundancies and the extra things and that is waste. And you know, there's a lot of that, and some of it were made to do by statute, but I'm always looking to try and really want to take your place, but say it's something else in time too. And come to the city, you know, the other thing what's happened is they're lying there, what they do for a living, so I I try to have a lot of respect for that. And you know, what we're doing, I try to look at us as, you know, board, we're kinda overseeing, we're trying to give direction, trying to listen to voters. Um, and that's a balancing act. And I think one of the things, you know, is is just really knowing that we're all working together. You know, we get, uh, we can get upset, we can get emotional, but then at the end of the day, we're kinda in the best kind of village cost plans. I think the more you get back to that focus, um, one of the best books out there for business is Good to Great. And the only difference between good companies and great companies is just a fundamental focus on what they can be world-class at. All the other stuff's noise, the companies that figure out what they do and how they can be the best. They're they're the biggest succeedors, and you know, I believe a lot in this village, I tried to invest some time in happening to it. I think we're one of the most beautiful spots in our state and our country, and you know, a lot to offer. Um, so you know, that's a little longer-winded, but, um, we have to find ways to trust staff, maybe have them hear less, and if there's a highlight. We need, we need to see them, they go through share.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have to take any action on this if we don't want to, uh, I I kinda thought this would be something that the department heads might might want, just given the amount of times that. I've been pulled aside and said I can't believe we voted for that because X, Y, Z, it's like, well, wish I would have known that, but I didn't. Or the amount of times where a department has verbally said something in a meeting and said, whoa, that fat, the thing you're saying right now was inaccurate. Again, I was just trying to offer, I was trying to help you guys, and trying to offer a vector for getting that stuff taken care of, so we don't take votes where you think we're misinformed. Or, um, um, you know, you don't have to yell in the middle of the meeting, because you know, something was lost in translating. But we don't have to take any action on that, if we if we think what is happening now is work, that's fine.
Well, in response to that, I'm one of the ones that does the most.
And I do appreciate it, by the way.
But I don't know what you're wrong about until I hear the question.
Yeah.
Or the statement. So if you wanna send me everything you're gonna say at a board meeting, I'll review it, then I can. I'll reply with true faults, you're bullshit, whatever.
Well, it's usually not me, I don't think you have to yell at me in a meeting yet, uh, having something inaccurate, but.
This is all plead I have, but I have to be prepared to.
I know, but I'm gonna stand your good side, Jerry.
Alright, so I I think what we can do is we have that the other reports wasn't intended for department heads. I think we just need to let them know that if they don't have to do it verbally, if they choose to put something under report with a written document, that's fine. And if there's something that comes up, you know, that's acceptable under that, you know, it doesn't have to be verbal, it can be written. But that, and that must have been, I don't know, maybe right my first year, we added that, so everybody has an opportunity to report to the board. Alright, let's move on to discussion regarding base budget.
Um, so this is directly from our budget policy, just kind of a quick overview of our timeline, so. Now, right around now, the board, you know, is talking about goals and objectives for the next year, and then department heads. Put their budget worksheets together, give them to me, August meeting, we give you guys the preliminary budget, and we start talking about it, and it gets approved in the upper. Uh, and then again, a quick recap, the budget is divided into the operating, capital, and debt service, we've talked about that before. Um, so tonight, we're, uh, the operating budget is based, uh, it's a base budget and personnel costs. We've talked about personnel costs before, that's wages and budgets, so then the base budget is everything that operate the village minus staff. So you know, it's our fuel and maintenance on equipment, our utility costs, property insurance. Paper, copiers, everything it takes to run the village itself. Uh, and then again, I have for the budgeting policy, um, department heads turn in their base budget consistent with the direction that they're given from. You guys, and it's usually, you know, a percentage, so it's your base budget plus one or two percent is kind of what it's been the last few years. Um, if there's anything the department has perceived that a cost that would be more than that. Uh, we've developed a supplemental request, and, um, to me, I think that works well, I like that. Uh, and so then on the next page, I just gave an example, and I picked on Cody. Uh, so for this year, his total operating budget is seven hundred forty-eight thousand, of which most of it's personnel. Uh, so his base budget is sixty-nine thousand three fifty, and again, that's for fuel and maintenance of police cars. Uh, supplies needed with their budget, uniform, balances, all that kind of stuff. Um, if we assume, um, you guys decide that he can increase that for two thousand dollars for next year. Uh, that gives about an extra fourteen hundred dollars, uh, so that's not saying, you know, each of his twenty line items goes up two percent. You know, maybe that fourteen hundred dollars is all gonna go towards fuel, or splits up between a couple of things. Uh, and then. Totally fictional example of a supplemental request, you know, because he has a lot of retirements, maybe he wants to say, hey, you know. We wanna provide extra training for those staff numbers next year, so can I, you know, get a one-time extra bump in training? And that would be something you guys are going separately. So that you have a base budget and a non-show, but we're. I'm happy to take questions whenever.
Any questions? Yeah, I I just have, I wanna, because now that we have finished all the sessions on the budget. Uh, as it was mentioned in there, both from the budget policy, department heads are responsible for proposing budgets consistent with. Priority direction from the village president and the village board, so in January. That is what we will have a discussion, I will still write the memo. You have all the information that, huh? I wish I had that much time, in June, okay, so. Here's what needs to to happen, the the the, when you do this, you have to look at what. We learned about the tax levy, because we can't go over that, so that's one of them. The other side you have to look is what do you think is a reasonable tax increase? Alright. Alright, and then in between there, you have to kind of look at what we've already approved. In spending that wasn't included in the twenty twenty-three budget, because that has to be incorporated. In the twenty twenty-four, so an example of that was mowing. Our mowing contract went up about six, potentially sixty grand, we knew, yeah, we do twenty-six mowings, it'll be. Fifty, what did I calculate? I calculated about fifty-nine thousand eight hundred, so that's already needs to be built in, unless we come up with. Something to do that, so that's what you have to kind of do. And I'm asking you to do that for the June, I want your input on what we should be. Telling, uh, the department heads, and it's basically three things, capital. Base. And wage and benefits, and please don't come back saying, oh, we should pay competitive wages, you need to do the numbers. What that means, and if we can actually afford it. So it'll take a little bit of work, but everything you need has been covered since January and, uh, uh. These budget sessions, so I'm asking you to do that, and we'll have a good discussion at the June meeting.
I was gonna say, I didn't put all these presentations on our website, just like, actually, we would pass.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
I think it's under like village board, and I look at like board reports, and I went back a couple years and anything that, you know, finance did on like wheel packs and.
Oh, perfect.
Any reports I can find, any committee did. And presented, I was with that.
Well, that should make it a lot easier than going back to January's meeting, February's meeting and stuff, so. Does everybody kind of understand that, and we'll have that discussion, and then I will do the memo and send it all to the department head. Sorry, what homework did you assign us? I wanna know, what do you think we should be telling them for the increase for the base budget? How they should present their capital? And what you think, how we should handle wage and benefit? Those are your three main budget budgets. Now you have to remember, okay.
I thought they were working on some kind of wage, like to.
Yeah, they're gonna give us a recommendation on how they have in January.
Right.
So there's.
In June.
In June, but that's gonna be, why am I stuck with that? But that's gonna be more on how, how they do it, so you could say, I think we can give everybody three percent, and that would be the lump of money. Three percent of this, and then when they bring that back, we would put it on how we wanna spend that treat. You see, I did. Yeah, not, you don't have to go through and each individual do it, what we're doing is these categories. So an example of last year, what we did is, we started off with a two percent increase in base. And we did, uh, start off with a three percent of wages and benefits, but it was just. A, a lump sum, and then we divided it out, uh, from there, and we got what we got, so.
Do we give them to the department heads that they can decide?
No, we, well, yeah, they did, when, when we met with department heads, we ended up merging, for example, everybody. Ended up getting the base three percent, and then we merged in, the merit pay for the people who got that the year before. And the people who didn't, we added the one percent, so they got a four percent, but it all came out of that bottom line. Alright, any questions on that at all?
I know this is all we need for June budget season start stuff, um, but you, uh, you might be still planning putting something together for.
Oh, yeah, but that's.
I know, that's not required for.
No, 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 we'll probably do, we'll probably have to look at, I don't wanna do it for June.
Right.
Because it's just gonna confuse things.
Yep.
Maybe July, I don't think anything's required, I don't think they have to have their budgets into us until August, right? Or is it July?
August.
August, that's what I thought, capitals August, September is, uh, operating, if I remember our.
Alors will be here to present our annual thin report. Now, I guess, September issue.
Yeah.
I didn't want to think I put together a presentation.
I think we did.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, we haven't seen it. There's not.
Of course, the first year's I was on, you did, yeah.
Try to find the input.
Was it already these ones?
No. We didn't have Cam there.
Alright, so next one, future agenda items. Cameron.
Um. I do think we need to talk about, um. And I don't even know how to do this, like, it might, it might be a planning commission topic, so, so maybe this is just something that, that goes on there. Their agenda, I, I just really, really worry that the wellness center, no matter. All of the details about it, second, we put that thing down, or we said we were gonna put it down. We close some doors, right, for, for pool, or village hall, or police department, if for some reason those don't work at their current site. You know, there's a lot of permutations that I just, I haven't heard a lot of discussion on, and I just wanna make sure that we have. Ducks in a row on kind of future plans or contingencies for where some buildings can go. So when we start laying them down, we know what doors we're potentially closing, and that there's no problem there. Hopefully, that makes sense.
Well, it makes sense, total sense, it's, uh, I would think we would, now that we've approved spending the money, we would at least wait for that. To be done, so we know the size and what it looks like, I, I think it's a waste of time.
I'm not talking specifically the pool, I'm also talking village hall and police department, too.
Well, that's been determined already.
Well, but, ha, uh, okay.
Unless you wanna reopen that, and I, well, we bought land, and we spent a lot of money already on it.
We bought land.
And we've done all the testing.
That we, that we, we've done the testing, which I don't remember how much we spent on that, I don't recall it being seemingly amount of money, but.
Probably worth five billion.
Um, so we, I mean, worse comes to work, we could sell that land and probably be at, at net nothing, we didn't even take a loan on it, right? So we just, you know, but, okay, but hold on, just, let's say we get to engineer. And let's say fifteen thousand square foot building won't work there, I don't know why, let's just say it happens. We don't have any contingencies if we're off some other buildings down in other locations, and like, you know, I was just talking to someone who was like, oh, well. If it came to that, the police station could just go there, and then you could put village hall somewhere, like, it just, I don't think we.
They don't want the police station there.
No, it's a big, I hear what you're saying, and I guess my answer would be, if we get to that point. And it doesn't fit there, or doesn't work there, then we basically are gonna start all over, because there's only one other option.
But, if.
So I, I don't, I, I don't wanna downplay this, but. Uh, Brian and I are spending a heck of a lot of time moving forward with this project. I don't wanna spend a whole lot of time, because it's gonna end up Brian and I doing it. For the other spot, we have gone through that, we're, I mean, we're giving commitments of a million bucks, we can't just. Turn around on that, so I think we gotta move forward with this, and if it doesn't work out, then yeah, we're back to square one and we talk about it. Or, well, we have, we have a senator willing to put in a million dollars for this, you know, so. I hear what you're saying, but to me, if it doesn't make it where we go, then we're starting over, you know, it, it, it is what it is. Cameron, it takes an incredible amount of time to do this.
No, I, I understand that, but I guess I'm, you know, just, you know, we have the big map, right, where we kind of wanna zone things. But we don't, for, for, we passed some planning like a, a year ago, or whatever.
The master plan, Charlie?
That was called.
Well, there's a master plan, I'm not really.
No, the village, the future village map thing.
Oh, the official map.
Official map.
Oh, okay, yes.
Is there not? A way someone could, like, the planning commission or something could put some thought into it, be like, this would be an ideal location, and this would be a contingent location. Or village hall, police station, and then here's a pool, here's a continuing place for pool, here's a wellness center, here's a continuing one, so. Like, I just, I don't think we've ever really sat down and thought about it like that, like, we're just all this hyper-focused on a single thing. And then I, I just worry that that's gonna close doors to the future, we're not thinking.
Well, you, there has been, when the wellness center, uh, if I remember, maybe Mike can correct me, when the wellness center. There was a whole complex, wasn't village hall and police department part of the, yeah, it was all one, I understand that, so there's your, there's a plan. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how I can, I'm sure, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with the planning, but. I don't know if you want me to, to say, hey, the police department, village hall would go here, then the pool would go here, the wellness center would go here, I. That's just making things up without having facts on it, and the biggest thing with that area, and we hear it every time. Is the traffic, can you imagine having pool, wellness center, village hall, and police station all coming out of Evergreen?
You know, we, well, we, that has been cited a bunch of times.
Yeah.
And I keep saying, like, that's, you know, where the fuck is right now, and we need to be skating where the fuck is going. The master map, we just talked about, has a road connecting.
Yes, no, yeah.
We've also talked about connecting those, like, there's vector, there's avenues there, it's like, I think it's silly to say. We should not make a massive capital improvement plan in that area at all, because, you know, the roads will never be fixed, that's.
No, I'm not saying they'll not be fixed.
I'll, I'll just make a quick comment, I think it's a huge improvement that municipal building and the police station are together in a, in a building, and. Municipal's building should be a source of pride for our community, uh, the previous building to this was horrible. This building was never meant for this space, um, so I think it also is an amenity for people who come to work every day, to have a nice place to work. Nice place to meet, um, or maybe the internet of work, we can have a bigger crowd, a bigger group. You know, I'm in favor of, and I think a lot of work's been done on municipal living, um, and I think it's a need. And, you know, I think there's difference between needs and loss, and how much you spend on, so, but, you know, wellness center, one of the reasons I'm a big proponent. Is because it is so cost-effective, and, you know, the more that space is used. I don't know how it can be more cost-effective and bang than I agree with it.
Alright, Judy. Well, we really should be discussing future agenda.
I'm sorry, you're right, I was like, I mean, you're agreeing that it shouldn't be an agenda item.
No, I'm gonna put it on as, I think it should go to plan, if you're, and that, I'll bring it back here, then we can refer, have this.
Going to committee, though.
Yeah, I, I think it could go straight to plan, if we have, I just, I don't know if we have.
Well, I, I, I had that, I was originally, if you remember, was told we can't re. Future gen, per, future a-agenda items, I, Brian and I used to say where do they belong. You guys wanted them all here, we can't take action on this, because it hasn't been noticed, so it has to go on the agenda, and then we can refer it to plan. That's the system that people have agreed to, so. Um, we'll, I will put that on, we can have this discussion and decide where, but yes, plan is where it should go, okay.
You're not recalling this topic yet, or?
Let's just call it, uh, um. Evergreen property planning process.
It's not even specific to that, I mean, we decided that their village hall is a great place for it to be right here, like a new one, like, that should be part of the.
Municipal.
Too late, it's already. No, don't try to. This is gonna be, on my understanding, you wanted to see how that would lay out on the property on Evergreen. Correct?
I, sure, that's the.
You tell me what the topic.
Yeah, well, the topic is just, we don't have any contingencies. And, you know.
Okay, so we're gonna put one building down, and that closes doors, and I just don't think we all know about all those doors, that's all.
Which property are you referring?
Three thousand Evergreen.
Okay, so, you're talking about.
Only because that's the first one coming, not because I'm not.
But I don't understand the doors closing, but anyways, tell me what you want on the agenda. Because I, I'm, I'm.
Laying off the price.
Um.
Municipal property layout. That, that's kind of what he's talking about, we can, play jigsaw puzzle with every property we have.
But can we go through the last fourteen years of meetings on this? We've had this topic.
I know, yeah, then, listen, I, I can't discuss it now, we'll put it on, do you have this for? You got a municipal.
I've got municipal property, we'll do municipal property contingency plan.
Review or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just do that, and then we can decide where, at the next meeting, we can't, we can't discuss it and take action on something that's not. Alright, anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
I'm all for that, alright, uh, all in favor, say aye, 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 thank you.
Yeah.